Thank you for being here. Before our meeting begins tonight, we will have a pledge of allegiance followed by, excuse me, an invocation offered by Commissioner Waddington followed by the pledge of allegiance.
God, our Father, as we gather for this meeting tonight, give us guidance, wisdom, to make the proper decisions. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance is as wide as the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Kresser, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Ms. Twine?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Lockhart?
Here.
Ms. Pool?
Here.
Ms. Lloyd?
Here.
Commissioner, if you have used before you the minutes of our meeting of September 11th through the 7th, do what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I move that we accept the minutes of the September 11th meeting in suspense for the formal reading.
Second.
Second discussion. Lot of objection, the motion will be approved. Here are no objections, the motion is approved. Now, we turn to audience participation, which I would like to make it clear that we will be talking about the Jackson Street Pier tonight, of course, and it is anticipated that the commission may take action on that, so you're welcome, obviously, to speak to that issue. A lot of familiar faces, a lot of new faces. You're all welcome. Really appreciate your passion and your interest in our city. Makes a difference. Makes Sandusky a special place. Thanks for all for being here. We want to make sure that we have the discussion tonight in a respectful manner, and I would just ask that you keep in mind that a lot of people have served our country in order to be able to allow us to have a respectful conversation, and I would like and very much appreciate your assistance in having a conversation that's consistent with that. I was at the planning commission meeting, as were almost all the city commissioners, listening into the public comments, and great conversation there, but let's not, let's be careful, there are people in this room that have very different views, and boos, and clapping is disrespectful, I feel, to the other folks who have differing views. There is a concern about making sure everyone who wishes to speak has an opportunity to speak, and normally our rules permit three minutes of, three minutes to speak to the issues in front of the commission, but there was the thought that we might have a shorter period this, the tonight so that everyone could speak.
Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make you a motion to have the comment period to two minutes, so I want to give as many folks as we can an opportunity here.
Start that motion. Thank you. Then a motion, second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bull.
Actually, I would prefer that we have an opportunity for people to give a complete statement as opposed to soundbites. Most of these folks probably came prepared expecting us to do what we normally do, and they're not orators or diplomats, so they're probably not accustomed to tweeting and making soundbites, but the majority rule.
Further comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lockhart.
I would agree with Mr. Pool that everybody should have the full depth to express themselves. I mean, this is no different from any other piece of legislation. If we have more people in the room, it's fortunate upon us that we get their opinion, so.
If it's three minutes, then it should be three minutes for this as well.
Further comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I agree that if it's been three minutes, let's allow them three minutes. I know it's a lot of people here, and a lot of people want to make comments, so I think it's only fair.
Mr. Chairman, I have no problem with two minutes. I think everyone can be very concise in their statements and whether they support or not support this.
I'm concerned about just something running on time and causing some people to leave before they have a chance to speak, so I support on this occasion changing after three to two. Mr. Kresser, would you call the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
No.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
No.
Mr. Pool?
No.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, so we'll begin the audience participation portion. Anyone wishing to speak, it's up to the microphone, give us your name and address, and share with us your thoughts, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, one other thing. As per usual, to the extent that there are questions that come up during the course of this section of the meeting, we will endeavor to answer those as the issues come up in front of the commission. We don't usually get in debates with the audience members and back and forth, so please, Mr. Walker, I know you know.
I don't expect that. Tim Schwanger, 362 Sheffield Way, I can keep my comments to two minutes because I've been doing this so long that, you know, I can do it in two minutes. You've been Mr. Mayor and some of the city commissioners to all the meetings, the ones at the State Theater, the Planning Commission, and there's a, I will admit, there is some support for this plan, but there's a lot of people that are opposed to it. So much more opposed, we feel, than what there are in favor of the plan that we're seeing today. And the Friends of the Jackson Street Pier are not opposed to change. Change is necessary on the pier, but just not to the magnitude that's being proposed. What you're going to ask to be voting on tonight, or into the future, or however you decide to do it, is basically a 29,000 square feet events complex with a 40 by 40-foot stage. That is not what I, what we consider to be a park improvement to the pier. It's another events complex to support the event planner stakeholders, which is Bike Week, Downtown Sandusky, Inc., the bars, the restaurants downtown. What needs to happen here is, it needs to continue to be tweaked. Small pockets of green space on the pier, additional parking places. What you're creating here with this plan is a nightmare for parking and also traffic congestion. This plan does not take into consideration that the Jaman, if and when it does come back to Sandusky, holds 40 cars. Not 13, like the Pele Islander, 40 cars. There's a staging area, but the staging area looks to us like it's going to be on Shoreline Drive. There's no area for those cars to line up, park, and get on the ship or get off the ship. What needs to happen here is, we take another seat back. There's no big push for this. This plan is not going to be done until 2020, okay, from Mr. Whoopser's comments at the meeting, at the Planning Commission, and also private meetings with our group. We had 40 people at our group meeting with Mr. Whoopser and Ms. Byington, and this plan needs to be rethought. We're getting close. We're getting close, but it's not there yet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Let me also note for the folks who are out in the hallway that they will all have an opportunity to speak. We do need to keep the door closed during the meeting because we've set out, we've set up an extension out there, monitors, so the people can listen and hear out there, but if we leave the door open, we get terrible feedback, and it makes it impossible for most anyone to hear. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mike Zohoff. I live in Market Street in Sandusky, but my part in this has been to chair the Planning Commission meetings on this, and in the interest of appearing impartial and being impartial and even-handed in the meetings, and the fact that there were a lot of participants in that meeting, I may not have, I know I didn't have a chance to fully express my appreciation for just how hard the staff and these commissioners have worked on this project, and I don't think you'll ever see a more public, more open, more inviting of public input than this process. Now, I think there's going to be a little bit of contention over the outcome, but I think it's probably really important for this community, regardless of the outcome, to get behind the decision, to seek opportunities to make the plan even better as they afford themselves, because this is a comprehensive plan, which will have details added to it going forward. So, the staff worked really hard, a lot of people advocated for particular views, and at the end of the day, I found myself, as a commissioner, voting in the minority against the plan, but only, I think, to send a message with full appreciation for all the things I really love about the plan. I appreciate that we maintained what seemed to be the single most important aspect of the plan, and that is the recreational use. It's not parking at the end of the pier. It's a scenic overlook. It's a recreational use. Just because it has two stripes doesn't mean it's parking. Parking means you store your car and go do something else. So, we maintained that, probably improved it, so that's, I think, the single most important aspect. I hope we take a real hard look at the, I'm at one, less than two minutes, but I'll try to, okay. It just seems that I talk long, that's all. I'm convinced, I can prove it, okay. There's a structure there, the planned uses for which are, many of the planned uses don't require a structure. In my opinion, some of the uses that require a structure would be better done elsewhere, and I don't think that we've fully explored the alternatives, so I hope we'll give that a low priority or slow-walk that part of it and thoroughly look at alternatives before we move forward with that part of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Zohoff.
Well, I guess I'm up. I just would like to say, I've lived in Sandusky all my life.
Well, I'm sorry, ma'am, for our record, would you state your name and address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's Lois Cruz, and I have lived in Sandusky all my life. That's 86 years, so I have been used to Sandusky and how we attest to changes, and we aren't very good at accepting changes, and there are some times when a change is not good. And when I first saw the plans of this dock, I thought, oh, never, you know. Well, with the goings-on of it and everything, and the fact that we've got the, now we've got some of the parking down at the end of the dock by the water, I think that's a good thing, and we still have the green space, too. And I know some people are like, green space? Who cares about green space? But green space is pretty, and it's comfortable, and it's, if you like to go down and sit on a dock and relax, green space is just as good as anything else, as far as concrete and blacktop and so forth. So, I think we have, I think we have progressed with this dock to do, to now make a conclusion of it and agree with it and go along with it, okay?
Thank you, ma'am, for being here.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Dave Fanner, City Resident. I want to-
Mr. Fanner, would you state your address for the record for Mrs. Kresser? She keeps it in the minutes.
1131 Norman Drive. So, I want, I'm up here to present some information about the current design. I want to talk about the current design of Jackson Street Pier, what it provides. It provides large, open, high-volume traffic for cars, buses, and motorcycles. Any of those people can come in, move around, it doesn't provide congestion. There's in-out access. Regarding boat line access for the Good Time Jet Express, there's convenient parking. You can get out of your car, you get on it, you go. There's good customer service. For the Pele Islander, it supports offloading of vehicles and passenger traffic with custom support facilities already right there. This is Jaman access, but there's no contract for that Jaman. We haven't seen that. Regarding street-level viewing, it's open, and you know what? There's no obstructions. You can go out and you can view the bay. It's perfect. Regarding fishing, you go out there, it's great. You get in your car, you get your fishing gear, and away you go. So, let's talk about some issues with current design. I think it's run down a little bit. It's not very good support, not very good support for the food trucks, there's poor restroom facilities, and there's very few shade areas. So, let me talk about the proposed design. It reduces parking. It doesn't support high-volume vehicle traffic. There's spaces for buses, cars, and motorcycles. Regarding the Good Time Jet Express in Pele, yes, there's parking available, but again, it's constricted, and when you have all those people coming in and out, you're going to end up with congestion, in my opinion. There's other parking areas, but you know what? They require multiple block walks, there's steps going up and down to use those parking facilities, and also you have to cross multiple lanes of traffic in order to do stuff. Again, it's a poor customer service for those businesses. Let's talk about the view. You're going to put in permanent structures, you're going to have an elevated green space from Shoreline Drive, you're not going to be able to see out to the bay or any of that area. You're cutting off all that view access. So, those are, and let's talk about fishing. Now, you have to lug your gear all the way down the pier. Parking access, you guys, according to my information-
Mr. Fanner, could you begin to wrap up your remarks, please?
Sure. From my understanding, it's a 1,500 events area, you're adding approximately, a need for 375 additional parking spaces at four persons per car. That's going to, that's increasing the need for parking, yet you're decreasing the available space, and so I think that's a really poor design. I really think you guys need to go back to the drawing board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fanner. You may have a future as an auctioneer, sir. You put it back.
My name is Hank Fanner, resident of Sandusky for many years, live on Campbell Street outside of the area right now. Commission, Friday night, September, just the other day, how many people, how many cars you think were parked on that dock? The booze cruise was not either in, I don't know if they had one or not, but nobody was lined up there. There were 63 cars on that parking lot, leaving 28 additional for something other than fall time. Think about that. 63 cars were parked down there. There are five green spaces, Shelby Street, Paper District, Shoreline Park, the Old Wave Park, and Valley Park. I drove the whole one, and there was not one person on any of the green spaces on those five places. There were a couple people outside the fish place down there, and a couple playing, the kids playing in the park down there. There was not one person in any of them green spaces. Okay, one hour presentation. Nobody recognized the fact that on the corner said 271 parking places. Nobody asked or questioned it until I was about the fourth speaker, and I said, how many you really got? I turned around, and they said, 93. So, I go with 93. Immediately, I said, it's over a 65 percent reduction. Figure it out, folks. You lost 198 parking places. There's no comment on that until Mr. Pool later questioned it and voted against the plan. I was in testing for 39 years, professional engineer for about 40 years. Whenever they come up with a engineering plan or a plan, you do approve a performance test. I understand, I just found out recently that this was brought up some time ago, but you can do it up there, red sheet, block off all the areas that are not going to be accessible after the project. Ensure no harm to the boat, people down there, and make sure they're safe. Use a barricade like a dump truck, put it in there, so you got to drive around it. That'll slow it down. Put the snowplow on the dump truck and see people run into it. Block the east entrance. Block off the areas that, for the buildings that have no designated thing. 16 food trucks, get real. I was down the other night, had 63 people, and the one food truck was down and wasn't even busy. What a waste of space. Place signs, why areas are blocked, encourage feedback, comments. How about getting a university down there?
Could you begin to wrap up your remarks? Well, pass the mark.
Get a university down there and do a survey, you know, and think about this. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
My first issue, Tim Stuckey, 1307 Fifth Street, Sandusky, Ohio. I have two issues, but I'm going to put the first one first because I think it's very, very important, because we have a very, very, very strong safety problem at Warren and Scott. Now, I was out there looking around, and I've been, I travel the world on my motorhome, and I see different circumstances. There's a couple places where what they do is they use two stop signs, one on the right, one on the left, for visibility that people know it's going to stop. 269, a couple of these other roads out there do that. I cross that street a lot. I live on Fifth, which is just down around the corner. I use that street religiously, probably 10 times a day. We will not use that street as of today. We will not use that corner as of today. The problem is, I went out there and looked it over. Now, have, Mr. Murray, you go down that way. Now, you have a stop sign that's on the right side, okay, on Warren Street heading east. That's also the same side of the road that all the cars park on. You don't see that blessed sign. I almost got sideswiped three times in the last couple days. I told my wife, my wife already told me, she said, we are not using that street. My proposal to you is to rectify a problem. You need to put another stop sign on the, well, it's kind of hard because east-west, north-south. Across the street from that store, you got the sign right there. Then across the street, put another one, so it would be two stop signs with red lights on them. Tell those people on State Route 6, you got to stop, because they do not stop. They don't see that darn sign on the right, because of those cars parked there. Now, the other side's no problem, because it is on the right. I would wish, Mr. Murray, that you put a directive out to these people to check into this situation, then I'll go to number two.
You're at two minutes, or passed it, Mr. Stuckey.
Oh, I can't address the other quick issue?
Please, quickly.
Quickly. I wish you to please look at the Shoreline Drive project and look at the conflict you're going to have with parking across the street from Cedar Point, the old dock there. I understand they're going to change that whole parking on that street when they come down through there, and I've been told by people I go visit there that they're really leery about the fact they're going to lose all their parking, because they said something about they're going to change it, and then the people can't find a parking spot, won't be able to go down Jackson Street Pier and park to patronize their businesses. So, I wish you to please look at that Shoreline Drive project in process with this other one. Thank you.
I'm back. My name is Barbara Linden. I live out in Merewood Village, and I know I'm a pain in your butt, but the Jackson Street Pier, nobody has bothered to say that there's only one way on this pier and one way off. It is not a horseshoe anymore. It will not be a horseshoe anymore. The more you put on there, you want to put the farmer's market on there with no parking, you have to park a block away. Come on, let's get real. And the more you put on there, it will no longer be Jackson Street Pier, it will be another recreation center. That's all it's going to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Waddington.
I prepared a statement. My husband and I actually prepared our statement together. My name is Kristen Webb. My husband is Alex Webb. We live at 125 Palmer Drive in Sandusky. We are here because we love the Jackson Street Pier the way it is. That does, it does need sprucing up, including, you know, a little bit of green space, not what is in that plan. It's ridiculous. Our main problems with the plan as it is are, there's really no need for there to be so much green space or an events area. There's plenty of green space available on the waterfront. There are also already existing events areas that are underutilized, which have repeatedly been pointed out to you all. Today, we drove around to all of the lakefront parks, and what we saw was trash, geese, empty, underutilized parks. That is what we saw. There is no solid plan for maintaining the already existing parks, and you want to build a new park. When you can maintain the parks that we have, maybe a new park would be welcome, but not on the pier. The pier is a working pier. I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous. So, when we were, I was at a meeting with Eric Whoopser with the Friends of the Jackson Street Pier, and he was asked multiple times about maintenance, and there was no real plan. We were not given a real plan. So, it would be nice if there was a real plan for actually maintaining what's going on. Our streets are neglected, signs are neglected, everything is neglected within our city. So, what makes you think that the Jackson Street Pier is going to be different? Maybe for the first year or two, it will be maintained, but what happens when the budget money isn't there to maintain it? Because that's a fact of what happens. Budgets go in and out.
Could you begin to wrap up your time?
I will.
You're up to your time.
If you have actually taken the time to read all of the people that don't agree with it on various social media, like the Register, you'd know that a great many Sanduskeys don't want these plans to go through. The small minority are the ones who seem to have the monetary influence, which of course makes them the loudest voice. The working class of this great city do not want these plans to go through. We are who you work for. Our voices count. Sandusky is not a big city like Cleveland, so having a big-city architect come up with these renderings makes very little sense. And thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Catherine Carter, 5309 Columbus Avenue. There was a lot of talk in the parking lot after the Wednesday meeting, a lot of little groups talking for quite a while. I talked to Mr. Gory, and I told him I would bet a paycheck on it that if there were a few things done to this design that would appease more people, you would get more people on your side with this. And it's just a few things, and you still end up with everything you have on this design right now, but just a little bit different. And we, the Jet, the Good Time, the Pele Islander, the Friends, the Dockers, the fishermen, we're not the only ones that use that pier. It's not about us, and we're not trying to make it about us. But we talk to people all the time that come up to the pier from Canton, from Florida, from Michigan. They just love that place. Now, sure, it needs to be fussed, it needs to be fussed up, and could you be, this design could be tweaked. We're getting, like Mr. Tim said, we're getting close. I would suggest, from what I've talked, people I've talked to, not voting on it, give it some time to breathe, let Mr. Pesta talk to some people, he could throw it together in a day. It's on a computer, there's not shovels in the ground. It still can be changed, it still can be updated or rearranged and presented to you again, and presented to the Planning Commission. This has divided this city deeply, and we just, I know you want to do it right, everybody wants it right. The people who want more green space, as been mentioned over and over again at all these meetings, I drive by Sandusky Bay Pavilion, and no one's down there. Unless there's a planned event, no one's down there. And the problem with what you're doing here is if you don't have planned events down there, it's going to look the same way. So, I hope when you get done with this, you have planned events beyond just demanding all these other events that are throughout Sandusky that make people go through the parks in other places in Sandusky. You're not just going to shove everything down here. I hope there's more to this than just what we're seeing.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
And we appreciate this.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Sharon Johnson, 1139 Fifth Street. I'm not going to take up my two minutes telling you what I don't like, because you've been there, you've heard all of us. What I want to know tonight, and this is kind of sneaky, because this wasn't even on the agenda. It's not on the agenda. We don't know if this is a resolution, an ordinance, what you're going to do tonight. Is this the final thing? Are you going to tweak it, bring it back here, and we're going to talk about it some more? I would like to know if this is, I've been told this is a resolution, so legislation should come up on this again, but I don't know that for sure. I've been told about that from Whoopser, but I want to know if this is legislation or what it's going to be, because I want to know how much these guys are going to get paid to tweak this, this plan and scale it up, or whatever you need to do with this, and where the money's coming from. This should not be a done deal here tonight. There should be some legislation coming up with a contract for these guys, unless they're working off of the old contract. I want to know that. And what's going to happen here? You didn't explain that to us, and I hope that you will explain this tonight. This is sneaky, the way you did it.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. That will be addressed during the commission's discussion. Others, please.
Hi, I'm Nicole DeFritas. I represent the Jet Express. I'm the Sales and Marketing Director for them. We're here tonight just to pledge our support for this project. I know a lot of people have addressed concerns about our parking for our customers, and in the beginning, we also did, too, but after meeting with Eric and his team and looking at the numbers that we run out of here, we're more than confident that with marketing on our end, that it satisfies what we need for our customers. So, we just commend the administration for the work that they put into working with us, and like I said, we're here to support the project. And just on a personal note, I live in Port Clinton, and the city of Sandusky is the envy of everybody with the energy and the excitement that's here, and so I just want you guys to know, the chatter outside of the city is, you guys are the envy. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. DeFritas. Others present wishing to speak?
My name is Blake Har-
My name is Blake Harris, 1125 Hollyrood Road. I know, real quick, last time, many of us got caught up in, you know, the pros and the cons about this. However, this time around, I just simply kind of wanted to take a different approach. And I'll start that off by, starting off with a quote. It says, "Look around you. Everything changes. Everything on this earth is in a continuous state of evolving, refining, improving, adapting, and enhancing, and changing." We were put on this earth, we weren't put on this earth to remain stagnant. With that being said, I believe as a city, we cannot remain stagnant either. I understand that the current landscape of the pier and the memories made there are of great significance to many. However, in saying that, for those who are opposed to this proposed plan, I challenge you all to open your minds. Open your minds to new concepts, a new vision, a new and progressive future, a future that is ultimately made up of your children, grandchildren, nieces, and nephews. Open your minds to allowing us, allowing them, to create new memories of their own in a new space, in a new landscape. Life as a whole is and should always be about progression. Therefore, let's not focus so much on what is being taken away. Instead, let's shift our focus to how it's being enhanced, what is being added to. Take a look at the pier. Better yet, take a look at downtown as a whole. We have kept the foundation and facades of many of these buildings intact. However, we've taken the inside, the heart of them, and renewed them. The point I'm trying to make is that although we are creating a new space, we are still building upon that very foundation in which those memories were created, where the history was made. By accepting this proposed plan, it provides for us the opportunity as a city and as a community to continue to create new memories, therefore allowing our history to evolve into something even greater.
Mr. Harris, could you?
Yes, it is, yes, I'm sorry. Let us take the history that we've had and combine it with progression so that our future generations have a history that they too can be proud of. And here's to the next 200 years being greater than the last. So, thank you, appreciate it.
I'm told there are about a dozen people out in the hallway or in the lobby who wish to speak, but I don't want to cut off anybody in the room who wishes to speak. You're all welcome. Don't feel any pressure not to speak, please.
Okay, my name's Holly Blanton. I live at 434 Windswood Way. I just wanted to say that I really appreciate the plan, and I just want to move forward. Last week, I did come in here and speak, and I just want to say that I really like the plan, and I like that we're having a better positive conversation this evening, and I really hope that we can move forward. Thank you.
Thank you for being here, ma'am.
I'll be very quick. Ryan Whaley, 316 East Water Street. I'm very much for the plan, but I, that's not what I want to talk about. I just want to just really say thank you to the commission, the city leadership, Alex's team. A lot of work went into this, and the way it's been opened up, the way it's been on the public, the way it's been talked about has been fantastic. The fact that we are all so engaged is impressive, and I think we need to continue that on other projects moving forward because, as Blake said, the city certainly is changing, and change is going to happen one way or the other. But all of us having our voices and being part of it is very important. So, great job to not only the city leadership, but everybody in this room for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Whaley.
Good evening. My name is Larry Fletcher, 13 Twin Oaks, Mylan, resident of Erie County, frequent visitor Sandusky, and employee of Lake Erie Shores and Islands. And I'm here tonight representing our Board of Trustees of the Erie County Convention and Visitors Bureau. For the past 11 years, we've been partnering with the Ottawa County Visitors Bureau to promote the region as Lake Erie Shores and Islands, an area that brings in more than 10 million visitors a year, represents a critical component of our tourism economy. Total annual tourism-related spending just in Erie County annually, $1.6 billion, nearly 11,000 tourism-related jobs, and $191 million in taxes. Each and every resident's tax burden is lessened because of the spending from our visitors. Our favorite stores, our favorite restaurants and attractions would likely not be here if not for the money that's spent on visitors and how they can sustain them. And the quality of life for all residents in the community across this region is lifted because of investments made possible by our tourism economy. And that brings me to the Jackson Street Pier, a project that, from everything I have seen, seeks first to benefit the residents of the community and the existing businesses that operate from the pier, and in doing so, has the potential to become another great asset for our visitors. We know from surveys that we do, focus groups, and from simply observing where people go when they visit, that attractive waterfront areas that provide opportunities for recreation and relaxation, those are very high on the list, usually at the top of why people come to this area. Our Board of Trustees recently approved a letter of support for the latest version of the pier, and it's not often that we submit formal comments on an individual community's plans. We are primarily a marketing organization. We have a 16-member board. These people represent communities from throughout the county and a variety of opinions on development projects. In this case, however, I did receive approval to write the letter of support, and that was because we felt the proponents of the plan had done an excellent job.
Fletcher, I don't want to cut you off, but if you could wrap up.
Okay. In gathering input from the local residents and the business community, and have used that import, input to create a plan that accommodates all existing users while also providing many new attractive features for residents, visitors, and existing business to benefit from. We believe the Jackson Street Pier Plan is firmly within our mission and encourage the commission to consider these many benefits I've spoken about that, if approved, will provide to our residents. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Marcy Platt. I live at 1217 Columbus Avenue. I've been in front of this commission a number of times. First of all, I want to make an observation. I don't think Ms. Lloyd should have been able to vote on how much time we were given to talk on this, only because this concerns there's a conflict of interest with her building, and I believe she's not allowed to vote on stuff involving that building. So, secondly, what I would like to say is, um, it's a good thing I followed Mr. Fletcher because I want to, you know, they say follow the money and you can't fight City Hall. We've been trying to figure out where is this coming from, okay? Then I read Mr. Fletcher's letter, and he may disagree with me, but I do have it here, and I'll read it just a little bit. Last year, our Board of Trustees committed $150,000 to partner with the city of Sandusky, and a wayfinding sign project and additional $50,000 was allocated this year to provide support for the city's bicentennial Jackson Street Pier enhancements. It was our confidence in the continued growth of Sandusky, the quality of the proposed Jackson Street Pier Plan, and the potential for these things to drive incremental economic impact that enabled the board to approve these expenditures. Notice, they voted on this when there already was a Jackson Street Plan, before we saw the Jackson Street Plan. So I feel extremely duped. You always knew there was going to be a marketplace. You always knew there was a green space. Transparency? How is that transparency? All we've been doing, us group, is fighting on how many parking spots there are going to be. As a social worker in this area for 15 years, I can tell you the number-one thing that my clients tell me is, when I'm upset, I go down to the Jackson Street Pier. They don't make a handicap sticker for grieving. They don't make a handicap sticker for schizophrenia, and they sure don't make one for depression. You've got all kinds of areas down there to do whatever you want to do with. You've got one pier. Years ago, they took the Meg Street Pier away from us, and many of you that are here, that don't live here, that work for the city of Sandusky, know nothing about that. That...
You're past your two minutes. Could you wrap up, please?
I will. I will. But shouldn't I get three since, Nikki actually shouldn't have voted on that, that issue, but I'm not a lawyer, so.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison.
Okay, thank you very much. So I would like for the commission, because Mr. Fletcher got a couple extra minutes, I would, seconds, I would like for the commission, I have a high expectation of you guys. Everybody says everybody's equal. Yes, they are. But there are some people in our community that need a little extra help. This plan, most of the people that want this plan...
Miss Platt, you're pushing it too far, please.
No fun, no, no problem. I think I got my point across. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Bull.
Point of order, we should try to determine to the law director if it was appropriate for her to vote.
Ms. Harris.
For the record, as the commission present, you can set the agenda and run the meetings. This three minutes, two minutes thing was probably an exercise of utility. If you said that it was limited to two minutes to control the debate, it was well within your privilege to do so. You voted. It was unnecessary. You could have just said two minutes, but...
Okay, thank you.
Was it appropriate or not?
What I'm saying is, irrespective of whether she could have voted, if he said the meetings, if they're going to be limited to two minutes, pros and cons, it's limited to two minutes.
May I suggest, Mr. Chairman, that, that if the, the chairman can suggest this, if we choose to overrule it by vote, that is pretty much what Robert's Rule of Order says. We did vote.
By majority.
What, we did vote, yes, by majority, we, we did. And we did call for a vote, so that means what he wanted doesn't count until we say so because we called for a vote. The question is whether or not Ms. Lloyd's vote was appropriate.
She, but we're limited in all agenda items. It wasn't just specific to...
Right. Okay, thank you. Please, sir, proceed.
Do you have no answer? Is that the question?
He did answer.
It's on all agenda items.
Tim Burkey, 1305 Columbus Avenue. I want to provide two personal testimonials, one being regarding the process used to come to this fruition point. As a retired school superintendent, I'm very familiar with those types of processes and how, how you have to reach out and engage the public. I participated personally in this process. I was invited as a resident of the city. I was able to observe the process used. It was open. It was honest. There were not backroom decisions being made. Many, many residents provided input into this plan. There was a lot of debate, a lot of discussion, a lot of going back to the drawing board and reframing. And so I want to congratulate the commission and the city administration for following a very open, honest, and thorough process. The second testimonial I'll provide is, my wife and I lived in the lofts just on the second floor, just above where the Good Time ship is parked, for nine months. So we had front row seats to watch the comings and goings of the Jackson Street Pier. And I would provide to you that what we saw was a very underutilized space that we kept saying to each other, why doesn't the city do something about this? This is, this is an incredible piece of property where there are, should be more people coming to participate in activities rather than parking a car. The only time we saw the pier parked full was on weekends, and those were people getting in cars and leaving the pier. So I congratulate the commission and the administration for looking forward, not backward. Thank you.
Ms. Burkey.
Hi, my name is Kim Bowie, and I'm a lifelong resident of Sandusky, Ohio. I just feel that you're not listening to us. We need more spaces on that pier to park because the few that you're leaving us, those are going to be taken up by the people that are coming to get on the boat. There isn't going to be any way to maintain that these are just limited-time parking spaces. Number two, there's too much green space, and if you move that green space in the middle more, you can have a one-way traffic which would be easier flowing around the pier as opposed to one entrance. That's also an exit. That's going to be creating too much congestion for traffic. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowie.
Hi, Jude Guerra, 882 Cross Tree Lane, Sandusky, Ohio, resident for 26 years. First off, I'd like to say thank you to everybody that has worked so hard in planning this. I think both sides of this argument have raised valid points. My underwriting support of this proposed new project is that right now, in its current environment, I go down to the pier, everybody says what a great asset it is, how much we love it, and it's obstructed with unoccupied vehicles. There's people just parking there and leaving. So I, I just wanted to share with the commission and everyone else here my support of the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Guerra.
Hello, my name's Amanda Smith. I live on East Adam Street. Brand-new resident downtown. I moved away about four years ago and just recently moved back. I want to move forward with this city, so I urge you to move forward with this plan. Let's continue to make this city grow stronger. We heard from Mr. Fletcher. I obviously support those comments because I do work at the Lake Erie Shores and Islands as the Director of Group Sales. So please, let's move forward. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
I'm Bob Hare, 212 East Water Street. First, I'd like to speak for some of the businesses that I don't think can be here tonight because they're working and running their businesses in downtown. That is, for too many years now, we've, we've used space in front of their stores and shops to have events, and that affects their ability to get their customers downtown. I believe this plan will alleviate many of those headaches and allow us to get away from closing down Columbus Ave and closing down all the side streets so that we can allow them to get their customers in and, and run their businesses appropriately. I also believe Sandusky needs to proceed in an evolutionary fashion, not revolutionary, and I believe this plan gets us one step more, one step closer to being the city that, and reaching a potential that we, we have in front of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris.
Good evening, commissioners, Mr. Mayor. I am Bill Siemens, 212 44th Street, and this evening, I'm representing the Bicentennial Commission. The changes which have occurred along our waterfront over the past 30 years, as well as in our downtown area, have been significant, and I feel very positive, and we hope to help keep that ball rolling as we come into the bicentennial year. We've watched the evolutions of designs for the Jackson Street Pier, are pleased with the resulting plans, which have evolved with input from the members of our community, our city staff, and city architecture. We're happy to see and appreciate the collaboration on what we feel is a well-thought-out design. Our hope is to be able, by joining with the city of Sandusky, to be part of this forward-moving and forward-thinking process and eventually have Jackson Street Pier be a more useful and better utilized part of the heritage of our city and a legacy of our bicentennial celebration. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Siemens.
Hi there, folks. My name is Jonathan Monroe, 434 Finch Street. Just want to first start off by saying thank you for all coming, for coming out. I think it's important that we all get involved in our city, and any city that you happen to live in, get involved. So I just want to start off by saying patience is a virtue, and then I'm going to move on. I think that we could have been a little bit more open in one way, and moving forward into other projects and other ideas for the city, the way we can be open is by simply allowing the people of Sandusky to offer their suggestions, offer their plans on future projects. So considering the Jackson Street Pier and moving forward on future plans, all we have to do to kind of calm this conversation down a little bit is allow the city to suggest plans on future projects. So allow the people of the city to go online, come to City Hall, and show their idea, show their plans, and maybe we can get a little bit more clarity on what the people want. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Monroe.
Hello, my name is Charles Loughlin. I live on Tyler Street in Sandusky, Ohio. I moved here a year ago, guys, so I'm not really a Sandusky local, but I think this city is beautiful. I think it has a lot of potential, and in the year that I've lived here, I've seen a lot of growth and a lot of beauty come to the city. I just want to say that I'm for this plan. From all that I've read and from all that I've seen, I think it's a great plan and a great compromise, and I want to commend you guys for, for the compromise you've made. I, I think you guys are, are working hard to make sure that everybody is okay and is, is happy with it, but I think the more green space in any city is better. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Loughlin.
My name is Terry Ball, and I live on Columbus Avenue. I wasn't aware of what was going on until about a month ago with the Jackson Street Pier, and I imagine quite a few other people are in my situation with that. I don't subscribe to the Sandusky registers, but I don't know. I can really see a difference in the two groups opposed to this. Can you kind of... kind of see how one group is all kind of the same and the other group is all kind of the same? One group has a certain agenda, another group seems to have heart and passion for this. For the life of me, I can't figure out why somebody would encourage little kids to play on a pier. This plan makes the pier not a pier anymore. And as I said last week at this meeting, it's a mental health for so many people. I don't think you realize how many people would be affected by this pier being changed into an event center. As a city, we should benefit from our tourists, not suffer because of them. I don't see what's wrong with keeping our city quaint and different and unique. I'm losing my thought. I didn't prepare anything. I just came up here to speak from my heart. It's so important. I know it needs improving, but it... There's so many parks that are underutilized. I don't see the rationality of this plan at all, and how it got to this point, and how five of you could vote for this plan. It really makes me wonder. I think we should preserve the uniqueness and the wonderfulness and the beauty of Sandusky. Isn't the pier in a historic district? Does this mean if somebody has enough money, they can come right downtown and tear down a building and build it with some monstrosity? I guess it does. I don't understand this. It seems something this important to the people, the citizenry of Sandusky who live here all year round, that it should be up for a vote, and the people should be aware of what's going on.
Thank you, Ms. Ball.
Hi, Vicki Bird, 2114 Wilbert Street. First of all, I'd like to thank the city and the commissioners for the upgrade of Wilbert Street Park. As far as green spaces go, I think every city needs them. Underutilized, yeah, they're going to be, schools in. I don't know. I go to each and every park within the city of Sandusky, except for maybe one, just because I don't make it there. I usually go to the parks along the waterfront. You will see them being used. I'm not a nine-to-five worker, so I get to spend my days down there with my grandchildren. And the reason I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I'm going to now, I'm a friend of Jackson Street Pier. I even signed that petition. My concerns were three: access to the waterfront for fishing and parking for the businesses there. It's already a commercialized pier. You already have the ferries operating from there. Didn't want to see them go. It's my understanding, we're the only international port in between Detroit and Cleveland. Keep that. Keep the parking. From the things that I hear, people are afraid to walk a block or two, maybe three or four. I walked five just to hit the thing that the police had. Touch a truck, had to walk five blocks. Didn't care. That was with children in tow. We're not all handicapped. Evidently, some of us are afraid to walk around, and I take offense to the fact that some people think that just because you work in the city but don't live in it, you don't care. I'm grateful. I'm grateful that you're willing to listen. I'm grateful that you will continue to listen to the people that are so opposed to this, and I think that you will come out with the best decision possible for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bird.
Evening. I'm so glad we have a lot of people in the audience.
Ms. Harris, as usual, could you state your name and address, please, from Mrs. Cresser's record?
My name is Freddie L. Harris, and I live 1114 C Street in Sandusky, Ohio, and I am a citizen of Sandusky, Ohio. I am 75 years old. We were assaulted by Brittany Sullivan and Thane Hearn on 8/22/2017. On Monday morning, about 6 o'clock, Hearn and Sullivan acted together before entering to my home by kicking locks off my door. Hearn acted as kicking while Sullivan acted encouraging him. He came directly at me, brutal, threw me on the kitchen floor, caused injury to my left hip in my house. Hearn sat me on the couch and struck Brittany to wife me while he went into my bedroom and attempted to rob my home. A man was in the bedroom, and when she... Hearn encountered her, he assaulted her. Sullivan had previously lived in my home, but no longer lived there at the time. Later that morning, a man and I, due to our entry, went to the fire in the hospital for treatment, and were there unlike our early treatment. Hannah, Hearn, and Sullivan were treated like human beings. My problems are with the victim advocate and all the assistance here in Erie County. Ms. Melinda Buchanan called me, asked me what I wanted done with Sullivan. As a result of the attack, my home, I told my son, "I want Sullivan to face justice in that. It should include some restitution as well as some prison time, perhaps some counseling." Ms. Buchanan stated that she would talk to the prosecutor about this matter in the case. Hearn, I pointed out that he was only recently released from prison and perhaps was wanting to return. The prosecutor, Ms. Buchanan, and also Gerald O'Brien, made the own decision without notifying me. Anytime we get hurt, a victim, they supposed notify you, let you know what's going on. They didn't notify me, and I'm a senior citizen. As a victim, my constitutional right was violated. Article 1, Section 10A of the Constitution of Ohio states that victim crime often should be accorded fairness, dignity, and respect in the criminal justice system. I wasn't treated right. I was not treated fairly or with the dignity and respect in the criminal justice system by the justice. Ms. Buchanan told me she forgot to mail me the letter to notify me about criminal hearing.
Mr. Harris, could you begin to wrap up your remarks? You're over your time, please.
Well, anyway, they gave Peter Brook at my house an F1. That's probably one, highest selling gift. And as a result, they broke it down to misdemeanor. They put me in hospital treatment. It's not fair for them, not treating me fair like they did everybody else. As a victim, they supposed notified me in every case, which they didn't notify me. And the rules they have there, it don't fit. It don't fit a victim, because how can you break an F1 down to a misdemeanor? I'm a senior citizen. Nobody don't care who they do wrong. Justice not served to me. As a result, I hope everybody understands what I'm talking about, because I'm not right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris.
Hi, my name is Erica Bennett. I live on 247 East Water Street, and I'm a licensed professional clinical counselor supervisor. I just want to say, when it comes to the mental health aspect, a lot of our coping skills deal with being outside and being in nature as one of the main ways to reduce anxiety and depression, and adding more green space would definitely do that, especially being by the water. And it doesn't matter if you're 100 feet from the water or 500 feet from the water, you're going to start to feel better. One of our second coping skills is always get outside and exercise, walk. So if we have a little bit farther parking, we're going to get to walk a little more. We're going to get to see more green space. Therefore, we're going to feel a little better, and hopefully that can kind of help with the outerly, too, when they see all that green space, kind of help them out. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Bennett.
Hello, I'm Cole Durham. I live on 2325 River Avenue, and I'd just like to say, first of all, the civil discourse within this room today has been very pleasant to watch, with the elected officials and everybody responding in time appropriately. Our biggest asset in this town is the waterfront. I don't understand why we're underutilizing it as a parking lot. It's just something that doesn't make sense to me, so just like to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Dwayne Seer, 5318 Tiffen Ave. My only thing is with the pier is we're taking away the vendors that are on the pier that have been there for a while doing business. We're putting events on there that... We got areas right now that we're not utilizing for events that we need to start utilizing a little bit more and not have that, and scale back a little bit on the green space. Not much, but enough to put a little more parking down in for the people that are using the pier to fish or even sightsee. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Other present wishing to speak, please step to the microphone if so. Otherwise, we will move on to the presentation by Mr. Pesta, and I think that's the next order of business. I'm sorry, we have a brief hearing. Oh, excuse me, ma'am. I'm sorry, ma'am, I did not see you. Pardon me.
Hi, I'm Renee Russian. I live on Shoreline Drive, and first of all, I'd like to really commend what the commission has done and the city manager. The things that you've been doing for this city is just outstanding and bringing it forward in so many ways that is just amazing. I wrote two letters to the editor on this subject, to the Sandusky Register. I submitted them to all of you, so I would like those to be put in as far as this record goes today. That covers a lot, obviously. One of the... Looking at the plan that... How it is right now, I think there's too much parking and not enough park, so surprise, surprise.
Please, everyone's been very respectful so far. Thank you.
Yeah. And the thing of saying that, well, they're not being used, parks don't have to be used to be useful, and they just have to be. There's never too many parks. Also, Sandusky has a wonderful asset in their waterfront. We've lost manufacturing here. Jobs have gone away. That's happened all over this country. Those towns don't have this asset to bring money in, to bring jobs in. We've got it here, and we need to use it for everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Russian. No, you had your turn, sir. Other present wishing to speak? No. Then we have a public hearing on rezoning request. This is a brief for 113 and 117 Neal Street, and I believe that Ms. Sparks is going to present that.
Thank you, commission president and members of the commission. The property owner, Gunlock Sheet Metal, is proposing to rezone the above referenced parcels on the screen you'll see, from R2F residential two-family to commercial service, in order to accommodate an office and storage expansion at their site, as well as improving an existing circulation for the site. Planning Commission did recommend approval of the rezoning amendment, and in the meantime, the applicant has also received a variance for the facility for both the side and rear yard setbacks, as well as site plan through Planning Commission. As you know, Gunlock Sheet Metal is an established business within our city and has been a fabric of this neighborhood for many years. The current zoning in the areas, both residential and commercial, the rezoning of the parcels will allow the applicant to demolish an existing blighted structure and construct... An construction, excuse me, an expansion for storage and minimal office. Our bicentennial vision and our comprehensive plan recommends residential preservation within the area and encourages reclaiming blighted land sites for industrial and commercial development. Planning staff recommends approval of the rezoning of this parcels. And again, the applicant, I think, is here. Andy's here if you have any questions for him, but from a planning staff perspective, we do recommend approval.
Thank you. Chris, your questions or comments on the proposal? This is a public hearing, so if there is anyone present who wishes to speak on this topic, they're welcome to do so. If not, then this public hearing on that particular rezoning matter is closed. Thank you, Ms. Sparks. Now, Mr. Pesta, we will turn to you for your presentation, please, sir.
Thank you. Good evening to everybody. My name is Alex Pesta. With me tonight is Bonnie Tewin from Osborne Engineering. I represent city architecture. And before we jump into the presentation, which I know that some of us, some people have asked us to keep it pretty concise because of the amount of questions and answers, I do want to spend a little bit of time on our process. There are a lot of familiar faces in the room this evening. There are a lot of new faces in the room, and I think that the general tone of commending the open and civility nature of the conversation is something that we can echo. We've been working on with the community for the last eight months as part of this process, and we've learned a lot about Jackson Street Pier, about what it represents, some of the things that people want, some of the things that people don't want. One of the main things that we've learned about Jackson Street Pier, though, and came as being completely frank and open and honest, is how important of a place it currently is to the folks that live, reside, and also visit Sandusky. I think that a lot of people look at the pier and they see a huge parking lot. I think that a lot of people also look at the pier and look at it as a place of where they can spend a quiet moment. They can spend time with their family. They can fish. They can just gaze at the water, and it's a place that they can relax. All of those things happen currently on the pier, and we've learned a lot about those activities and some of those loves of the space. I do want to say and kind of address a little bit of the comments that I've heard this evening, not one by one, obviously, but that the vision for and the need for the Jackson Street Pier, there was a gentleman that said that the city needs to conduct a process to identify projects that would be undertaking. Well, guess what? The city did that two years ago with the bicentennial plan, and it was attended by many people. A lot of people in this room, I think, participated in that process, and what that process identified were hundreds of initiatives that could and should happen as weighed in by and recommended by the residents of the city. And Jackson Street Pier is one of those important initiatives, and we're very excited to see those initiatives move forward. Our team has learned a lot, as I mentioned. We've also learned a lot about the need for conversation and the need for compromise. There's been multiple options and versions that have been shared publicly. We've heard a lot of opinions, and we've been taught that, again, this is an important space, and we understand and we recognize that traditions were born here. Certainly memories were made. There are stories that have been shared and also authored on the sidewalks of Jackson Street Pier, and I want to echo that our job, and I want to echo one of the points that a young man made earlier, is that this plan isn't to negate any of that heritage. It's to support it. It's to progress it. It's to make sure that Jackson Street Pier is here for the next generation, as well as the current folks that are here. When we go through the vision, you'll see that all of the existing amenities, all of the existing uses are handled with the plan. So it's not an attack on the heritage. It's an attempt to maximize the value for the pier, for the three and a half acres that are there. It is incredibly valuable, and we think that there's a better future for it with some tweaks, as some people mentioned, and that's really what the design process has been founded on. So I've mentioned the input. Our process has been long. We started in earnest. We were in front of this commission in January, early this year, to get authorization for the first phase of the contract. We've had public open houses. We've had stakeholder meetings. We've met in spaces as big as the Sandusky State Theater, all the way down to individual living rooms, community spaces. You get the idea. We met people where they are, and we found that very important was to have one-on-one conversations with folks and meet people where they're comfortable. And a lot of those one-on-one conversations led to new discoveries within the pier. I think it also reminded a lot of people about why the pier is important currently. So in lieu of going through all of that process, I do want to say that it has been exhaustive. Sometimes it's been exhausting, but it is something that our team loves to do, and we've learned along with this process as well. So as a result of those conversations, emails, Facebook posts, Post-it notes, you told us to do really four things, and if we got these four things right, then a compromise could be struck. Retain all uses that are currently offered on the pier. Okay, these are important. Increase accessibility for people of all ages and physical ability. Provide waterfront parking and vehicular access to the northern portion of the pier. When we were in Planning Commission, someone corrected us and said, "It's not waterfront parking. It's recreational parking. It's a scenic overlook," but you get the idea. We're talking about that northern portion of the pier. And then with that balance of space, design beautiful new spaces and flexible places to expand the pier's usability, programmability, and attraction to both current residents and future. So with Bonnie's help, with our team, we did also a technical analysis of the pier. I will not bore you with all of the details, but what I can tell you is that we got... Sorry. I know, I see Aaron, sorry. These are great details. Actually, let me spend a moment here. I forgot that there are engineers in the room. We learned a very important thing, all kidding aside, we learned a very important thing with some underwater discovery that we did, and that the underwater portions of bulkheadings are in good condition. If that was, if that report came back less favorable, if it came back that the bulkheadings needed substantial repair, I don't think we would have any of these meetings. I think that the commission and the city would be tasked with finding millions of dollars to put literally underwater. So I share with you, I don't mean to discredit the work that was done, but that was a very good piece of news. We also did geotechnical studies to understand what the bearing capacity of the soil are, where the existing utilities are. We have a really... the soil are, where the existing utilities are. We have a really great understanding of physically what is out on the pier, and in some cases, what is under the pier from a utility standpoint, soil condition, and certainly the bulkheadings that's under the water. We also did a lot of observation and an experience of the pier. I'll spare you each diagram that's on the slide, other than I'd like to focus a little bit on the top right, which shows a couple arrows, a little, they're slightly hard to read, so I apologize. But the red are the areas that I'd really like to call your attention to. You think of the vehicular traffic and the patterns that are out there today. We've heard by a couple of folks, by their measure, that it's a congested place, that there's a lot of traffic. There is an ingress and an egress. It's one way around. That does create a loop around the Jackson Street Pier. It's very wide, and people drive pretty fast on that loop for the amount of space that's there. I share that because there's also people that are walking on the pier. And there are people that park to visit, the boat operators, the ferry operators, that everybody in this room wants to maintain and retain on the pier. And think about where those folks park, and then how they get to both the Jet Express and the Good Time. They are traversing lanes of traffic. And that becomes especially problematic on the western side or on the upper side of the slide, where the sidewalk along that edge is not contiguous around the boardwalk. So now you have pedestrians, families that are getting on the boat, maybe seniors that are getting on the boat, now contesting with cars that are driving on the pier. So we think that part of the design process is not only beautify, but also improve the accessibility and certainly vehicular operations. The bottom two slides show really one and the same thing. We heard a lot about accessibility. We heard a lot about how people want to continue to be able to use the space. I can tell you from an ADA standpoint, our analysis is that the pier in its current condition fails miserably. There are three curb cuts, three ramps that get you from the parking surface to the sidewalk. The curb is high in many cases. One of them is on the western edge, right north of the Homeland Security fence. The other one is on the eastern side, all the way back to where the cut through is for the Jet Express. And then the third, we were generous to the pier, is all the way back at Shoreline Drive, where the sidewalk comes and meets the right-of-way. So we've observed folks that are parked out towards the northern portion of the pier. They've had assistance to get to the sidewalk area. They've actually had to be lifted out of wheelchairs. The plan can do much better. The plan does much better to accommodate those folks and certainly more. The last piece on this slide that I'd like to call your attention to is the bottom right slide that shows the northern condition of the boardwalk. Right now, that northern condition is 18 feet, but you can see by the time someone that's fishing, that is also completely accommodated for, and I would argue enhanced in the new plan, someone is fishing. There's cars that are parked, the benches that are there. If you do the math and you back out all of those spaces, the walkway really gets pinched down. It's less than six feet of how much space you have left over to walk. So we think that the expansion of that northern boardwalk to accommodate additional uses there is very wise. It takes advantage of some of, again, the most valuable real estate. And to give you an idea of how much space we're talking about, imagine if that white Jeep Wrangler, if the front bumper was where the rear bumper is. We're talking about 19 feet. Those spaces are still very much waterfront. They're very close to the water. Your view is going to be the same, if not better, backed up from the side, because we're going to reallocate how some of those spaces work in front of that. So with our visioning process, I'd like to kind of walk through, spend some time with what the plan allocates for and how it accommodates the existing uses. Here's the plan. I'm sure that a lot of people have seen it in the register. What I'd like to do is focus on the northern side, and we'll work our way south. So that northern side accommodates 51 parking spaces, 35 of which are kind of the premium spaces around the perimeter. So all of those have waterfront views. That's very similar to the counts that are out there now as far as around the perimeter on that northern edge. You can see the additional boardwalk is expanded to just shy of 40 feet. The crosswalk that's in the upper left-hand portion, pardon me, the upper left-hand portion here is at grade. It functions as a speed bump, so it is actually there to calm traffic. From an accessibility standpoint, if you're on the sidewalk and you want to get to the other side, you're not going down and then back up. It's all meant to be a very accessible route. And you can see some of the low planting and landscaped areas that also double as seating walls around the perimeter. And those are there intended to, not only are we accommodating the parking, but we're creating a physical buffer between the parking and the pedestrians that are walking there. So what you can see on the slide is that expanded space on the north, on the left-hand side of the slide, the expanded boardwalk on the east, which is not that full 40 feet. It's approximately 26 feet. So again, it widens from its current condition of 18 by about eight feet. The parking spaces that are there, some of the design elements that we've pulled in are special paving. We know that there is a strong history and heritage that the Sandusky played in the role of the Underground Railroad. So we're pulling in special paving patterns that are meant to hearken to the quilting patterns of the North Star as a way to freedom. Like, these are beacons. These are ways that folks traveled. And it's important, again, I think we heard a lot about it this evening from various folks, to not only celebrate the heritage, but look forward to the future. We've incorporated many different types of seating, whether it's a bench, whether it's a flat-top bench that we've dubbed kind of the workbench. If you're there fishing and you want to put down a tackle box, you want to put down equipment, there's a space to do it. Something that is absent from the renderings, I want to call it perfectly clear, is that there is no railing around the pier. That was something that was an idea that was tested through the design process. There was not a lot of support for, so it came off of all the renderings moving forward. So with that, the northern side, I'd like to move towards the middle of the pier, where, again, those parking spaces, some of them have been reallocated as a great lawn. The space as it moves from south to north, so, excuse me, sorry, from here to here is grass. It's anchored on the bottom left or on the southeast corner by a small performance space. It is about 40 by 40 feet. That can accommodate a variety of different performances if they were to be there. In the time that it is not being used as a space for, or a stage, it can be used as seating stairs, places for people to hang out, and it's very much integrated into the landscape. It's not meant to be, hey, this is a huge stage that's in the middle of this space. It gets calmed down, and it is part of the landscape. Our design push with this, based on what we heard, was to create a public space that had green space, that had some of the other amenities that are there, with the ability to host events, occasional events. It is not, and I want to repeat, it is not an entertainment complex. It is not a concert venue with green space around it. It was very much the opposite way. That was the way that it was developed. As you move towards the northern side, that grass space does, there was a gentleman that did correctly say that that grass space slopes up, slopes up to about four and a half feet. And then on the northern side, there's cascading steps where people can sit, and we're calling those the sun stairs, right? So you can see the sun come up. If you're looking to the east, you can see the sun go down to the west. And at the bottom of those steps is a picnic area, again, fully accessible to the perimeter, boardwalk, handicap accessibility to the parking area. We heard that, and we met with various groups, including the 58 Dockers, that meet there every Tuesday evening. In the summer, a dedicated or an identifiable picnic space for them with the appropriate furniture and amenities is something that they very much wanted. And obviously, it's not just for them. There's multiple uses that it can be there. We're going to show in the renderings in a few minutes that that four and a half feet slope does not block views when you're further south on the pier. And here's what I can tell you, if the proof is in the pudding. Cars are about five and a half or six feet tall. So this is meant to, so you can still see the top of cars. So the view is going to be essentially the same, except you're going to be looking at green space instead of the backside of the cars when you're further south. On the western side, and probably one of the most important from an operational standpoint, you can see here, the side load Peely Islander has been replaced. The Gmon is reallocated. We've met with Homeland Security multiple times. The space that they've said that they need to operate, including loading and unloading, is in the short side of the L. So this portion here, I'll get to that in a minute. And what that did is that freed up the ability to have a contiguous boardwalk across the western side, which was incredibly important. That boardwalk now has a small ticket house, small restroom, the potential to have a concession stand, and other support spaces for the Good Time. Our team met with Joe Lamb on multiple occasions to understand not only how his business operates currently, but how this plan could enhance and increase, and maybe even improve, his customers' experiences with a dedicated ticket house that is serviced by a drop-off zone for commercial vehicles, i.e. tour buses. So as we move further south, I'm sorry, as we get into the green space, you can see that elevated. So you're on top of that four and a half foot rise. You can see folks sitting on the steps, looking to the north. Your view is not impeded. I would argue that it is enhanced because you're now four and a half feet up. So if you think of it, now you're looking out over the cars that are parked there, and you've effectively pulled that, the edge line of the pier closer to you because of the higher vantage point. And obviously, it provides flexible seating and recreation opportunities that's there. When you get down and you look further, or you look kind of down at the bottom of the steps and look your way south, you can see in the foreground space, one of those low seating walls that I mentioned. Sitting in a car, you're looking over it. It's not going to impede your views. There's green space that's there, the picnic tables that are there, shade elements, the trellis that's on the left-hand side. We use that to be positioned over benches, where we can hang benches from them and create effectively porch swings that are on the pier. We've seen other places utilize something like that. It's very popular. And then the last thing that I'll point out in this particular slide that is also very popular in other places, and I urge you, I know that the city recently completed a mural on the State Theater, you need the selfie spot. You need a place where people are going to go, whether it's a script sign that says Sandusky. You need it. That's part of the branding. That's part of promoting the city, not only from a Cedar Point standpoint, but the fact that there is a thriving downtown that people want to be at. So we've integrated an opportunity for that. Again, the western side, as you move through, you can see that wider boardwalk. On the west, it actually expands out beyond that 24 feet. That's to provide access for the Good Time, or if there's another boat operator that's there to tie up, provide the adequate space for folks to circulate in and around and through that space. You can also see, and I want to call this out, those buffers, those seating walls that I mentioned, there are gaps that we've designed in. So if you're parked in that space, you can walk directly onto that sidewalk. You're not walking all the way around. So it's become, it's still a very permeable perimeter that's there to get to the boardwalk. The last portion, the southern portion, as it connects down the Shoreline Drive, this is where we, just honestly speaking, very much we struggled with how the pier could best interface with downtown. And clearly, Shoreline Drive is incredibly important. We know that there's a streetscape effort that is also looking at ways that the street can be enhanced. It is our strong recommendation that there is one ingress and egress, a shared drive onto Jackson Street Pier. We do not think that there's congestion. We do not think that there is going to be a traffic jam. And if you have to wait in your car for a couple minutes, I think that that's going to be okay, because you're going to have great things to look at. It's also going to slow traffic down on the pier. So if people are boarding or coming off of the boats, it's done in a much safer way. The kind of flared area that's in the center of the image here is what we call the plaza. That's unit pavers. From a design standpoint, really what we studied, and we wanted to come up with a pattern, was think of a water, of a wave of crashing onto the water's edge, and then receding back out. So you can see kind of the foam that gets churned up, and some of the animation that we've picked up in the paving pattern. That entire area, much like that crosswalk on the north, is at the same elevation of the sidewalk. So as you're driving, that is one huge speed bump that you're going over. And there's also a texture change with the material. Again, it's meant to calm down traffic. It's meant to, as you come off of Shoreline Drive, turn onto the pier. It is not to hit the gas pedal and get to the north as fast as you can. We need to calm traffic. We need to make it much safer. So you come up, you go across, there is a landscaped area there, again, meant to slow traffic. The building that's on the bottom-left portion of the colored area is a multi-use flexible space. We've heard multiple interests in it. What we've been charged with was to design a space that is very flexible, that it is open to the public, that it includes public restrooms, and that it can be something that can attract new people and new uses to the pier. One of the main things that we heard through some of the public open houses is, let's have a space that can activate Jackson Street Pier during winter months. We think that a building like this, if you close the garage doors that are on the side, it could become a warming station. It could become a marketplace. It could be a place to have an office party, a family reunion, a community meeting like this. But there's ways that that space can then ultimately activate what we've considered a smaller plaza that connects down to Shoreline. You can see that from a paving standpoint, we've gone with a very linear option to emphasize the fact that that is downtown, coming in and meeting the shoreline, the indicated shoreline where the unit pavers are. You can see from Shoreline Drive standpoint, again, the building needs some architectural love. I'll be the first to admit. But the other thing that that does is it defines an edge between the historic Becklin Building on the right-hand side of the image, a new structure. It has the ability to have overhead doors. That boardwalk, you can see underneath that red trellis. The boardwalk comes all the way down, ties into the sidewalk against Shoreline Drive. That becomes, that could become a very active space. That could become the first gateway from a pedestrian or bicycle standpoint onto the pier. And you can see some of the public spaces that are there as part of that as well. When you get up a little bit higher, you can see that that open space is designed to be flexible. In this rendition, we've indicated some small vendor tents. So those tents are 10 by 10. And then you can see with how the landscaping is strategically placed. Again, it's very low-line landscaping, but strategically placed that it's visually interesting when there's not a vent that's there. So it doesn't feel like it's empty and vast, no man's land, when there aren't people there for a programmed space. The other thing that we've done, and what we recommend, is that the existing Jackson Street Pier sign gets relocated. It gets salvaged and relocated, and gets actually positioned further north on the pier, right before you go over the speed bump. The idea is to, in a sense, redefine the entrance point on the Jackson Street Pier. There needs to be an arrival point. You need to know that this is, I'm now on the pier. So if you drive through that portal, you go over that speed bump, all of a sudden it changes from an area of parking spaces to an area of green space and drop-off zones and bollards and porch swings and different seating elements. And that's really an important portion of design from an operational standpoint. At that circle, we've worked with Joe to understand how his customers arrive. He's mentioned that a lot of his traffic, a majority of his traffic, arrive by tour bus. So we've designed that space to accommodate a tour bus that could make the turn. And therefore, that tour bus now is not going all the way out. There's not a need for it to go all the way out to the northern edge of the pier. By the way, it does operate from a standpoint of the bus does go all the way out to the northern edge of the pier. But that way, people can get off of the bus. They are right adjacent to where the new ticket house is. We've created space for them to hang out, whether before or after a tour. And then the bus can be retrieved. It can be parked remotely. We think that it's about a three and a half, four-minute walk that's there. All right. So again, you asked us, you charged us with four main portions, or four main directives that we learned. Waterfront parking, retain and enhance uses, increase accessibility in new and flexible spaces. So let's just recap the waterfront parking. There are 74 parking spaces accommodated in this plan on the western side and the northern portion of the pier. That does not include the additional 24 that are further south, just out of frame of this image. So those are waterfront parking spaces that are there. Retain and enhance uses. Obviously, the Good Time was top on that list. The Canadian Ferry, the international travel was also there. The idea that you could still continue to drive to the northern portion, and obviously, fishing accommodations along that northern side, and I would submit on the east-west, are also accommodated here, I think, in a much, again, in a much enhanced way with the additional space that's on the boardwalk. Increased accessibility. What I can tell you is that at every corner of every single area where people are going to park, there's at a minimum going to be one curb ramp to get people up to that location, up to that elevation change. I mentioned the crosswalks that are raised. I mentioned the fact that that area where that bus is currently parked is a zero curb. So someone gets off, they don't have to navigate a curb. They step on the boat and they go. Or if you get dropped off and you're going to get on the Jet Express and you're wheeling luggage and three children, like I do, I don't have to navigate a curb if I'm pulling luggage behind me, or if they're each dragging their suitcases behind them. It's a continuous, seamless way to circulate the pier. And then what I will, the last thought that I will, second to last thought that I will leave you with, is that when you balance this pier right now, I didn't go into the statistics, but right now, it's about 98 and a half percent asphalt hardscape. This rendition, this design, takes it to 77% hardscape, 23% green space. So I know that there's been a lot of discussion about the size of the green space. It's a very modest-sized green space for the amount of activity that could be supported here. And look at everything that you get when you start to reallocate, and you start to look at those parking spaces. You start to reutilize some of those parking spaces that don't have to be there for overnight parking, or that you can take advantage of some of the proximate parking that are immediately within downtown. So we think that there is a tremendous future for Jackson Street Pier, one that honors the heritage, one that honors the heritage. the heritage, one that supports the current uses, enhances, retains, and certainly plans for a new future where new memories can be made, new traditions can be born, uh, on the pier. The last thing that I want to leave you with is remind everybody in this room that Jackson Street Pier and other initiatives that the city are currently undertaking were things that were identified in an 18-month planning process that was part of the bicentennial vision plan. And if you don't believe me that that's a good document, if you don't believe me that there's great things that are coming out of that, what I can tell you, and we were absolutely sworn to secrecy, is later this week, that plan is going to be recognized for excellence in planning with the state of Ohio. So it's not only folks in Sandusky that are seeing it, there's people outside of your community that are seeing it, they're very much impressed, as are we, uh, by the fact and the speed of which you are implementing these things. Many times master plans take years or decades, and there are elements certainly in that plan that will take a very long time to implement. But you guys are not letting that plan, uh, gather dust, and I think that that is incredibly, uh, something that is very incredible and it shows that you guys have committed to the vision that was laid out by the community as part of that bicentennial plan. So with that, I'm sure that there are many questions, there are many discussion points, and I'd be happy to take those now. Thank you so much for the opportunity to continue to work in the community, um, it is an absolute pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pesta. Commissioners, questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
Um, I just want to say thank you to Mr. Pesta, City Architecture, Ms. McFellin, Osborne Engineering, and all the city staff for all of your patience throughout this process. I know it's been very long, um, this has been a heated topic for some time. Um, we have a very passionate community, which can be trying at times when we don't all want the same thing. Um, I may not have a vote when it comes time, but I will share some of my thoughts. I really believe the public process has worked in this situation. Uh, it's allowed, I promise. We listened over and over to people's wants and needs, some groups have been louder than others, but if you really look, everyone's getting a piece of what they want. Um, at Planning Commission last week, a few residents pointed out, it's hard to make some of these meetings, just as Mr. Harris said, um, due to running businesses, um, having to go to work, their families. I know some people couldn't make it tonight because their children had football practice or a soccer game to be at. So I want to thank everyone that has taken time out of their busy schedules to participate in the process, um, and we need to make sure that we're meeting needs, like everyone's needs. Um, I think one thing to take to heart is, this is our pier, um, it's not an individual's pier, um, we have to come to a compromise. Jackson Street Pier can be a great location for a community gathering space where residents, family, and friends would be able to meet and enjoy time together. Many have talked about traditions through the process, I think this is a great opportunity, um, to enhance those traditions and create new ones. I feel this plan is, takes the current traditions and enhances them. Um, I will tell you, I don't love the plan, uh, I think we could have pushed, pushed further, however, I think with that being said, the plan is all-inclusive. It's welcoming to fishermen, pedestrians, cyclists, and so importantly, our families. Um, and of course, there's still parking, northern parking for everyone, and I think if, um, city staff really focuses and, um, manages appropriately, um, it will preserve parking for those that need it for short-term, um, not so much the long-term empty cars. Um, I do appreciate that there's only one access point to the parking lot, specifically focusing on families, to make sure it's a safe place for parents to take their children. Um, and I think that as a community, we have a lot of work to do to make up for some lost time. Um, I hope we can continue to work together and tackle future projects to keep pushing Sandusky forward. Thank you.
Commissioners, questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Watergate.
It's been, uh, a lengthy, uh, debate on this, Jackson Street Pier, I'd like to thank staff, um, fellow commissioners, but also, I, I guess, uh, biggest input for me was going out, reaching out and talking to residents that, uh, I met with maybe in a, a coffee shop or at a school or maybe a football game or something and bounced it on, uh, that had a, a big impact for me, so I know it's, um, a hard decision for some, and, but I will support this plan. Thank you.
Additional questions or comments, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Paul.
Just a couple of questions. Alex.
Yes, sir.
What was that final number that you got, folks, uh, worked, worked with for the good time, for the number, not the good time, Jet Express, the parking they needed?
For the Jet Express?
Yeah, what was that final number? She said-
Total parking spaces on the pier in the proposed plan are 98 parking spaces. So that's a balance of both, uh, what I would consider immediate, short-term, uh, maybe some medium-term, and then the ones that are going to turnover.
What I'm interested in is, is, well, first let me preface that with, yes, there are many things on this design that are just, that look very nice, and there are definitely improvements. Uh, what I'm concerned about, and have to, have to, in terms of determining this vote, is we've gone from $2.6 million to 5.5 to $10 million, and now it's down, the last word was 4 to 7 million dollars. And I would need to make sure that this is going to work. And it's not enough to just say, as you did, what's there. The question is what, whether or not it actually, and also you've made the good time satisfied, you've also made Jet Express apparently satisfied, they say they are, I need to know what the number is, and so I can, then we'll go to the next question. What's the number for Jet Express that you used in determining, coming to conclusion 98 spaces was sufficient for all the uses there? I mean, did they say they needed? The, good time said 60.
Oh, the good time gave a range. The good time gave a range of between 40 and 60 convenient parking spaces.
All right, I'll, I'll round to 50, sounds good.
Mr. Webster?
Okay.
Through, through the commission president to Commissioner Poole, uh, we had numerous conversations with the Jet Express throughout this process, and what they indicated is that they had a, an awareness that there was more than ample parking throughout downtown Sandusky for their customers, and it was less about a committed number of spaces on the pier, but making sure that we had convenient drop-off areas, signage, and marketing to ensure that those who parked at any variety of places throughout the downtown could make their way to their pier. And, and ultimately, specifically, things like the Erie County Parking Garage, which sits, uh, almost entirely vacant every weekend, uh, were really good places. That's actually just a little over a block from the entrance to the Becklin Ferry Building. Uh, Washington Row, which we've counted all summer, sits even on really busy summer days, has 86 parking spaces, rarely more than four or five cars parked in those 86 spaces, uh, all weekend long. It's, again, and what's interesting is those are spaces, uh, the county garage and Washington Row, that actually stay pretty busy during the week, Monday through Friday, for office workers, but there isn't a good use for them in the evenings or the weekends, when ultimately we have that sort of second shift or tourist that comes into town. So I mean, uh, I think Nicole has spoken with the jet, but basically they know that the well over a thousand spaces downtown are more than enough for downtown at any given time, including their customers on busy weekends, we just have to work with them hand in hand to make sure that that parking is signed, available, and ultimately, uh, that there's easy drop-off for folks that need more, closer proximity for their goods and, and loved ones.
And Mr. Chairman, may I just, just point out that, uh, in the end, those two businesses represent just two businesses downtown, and the responsibility for providing parking falls to the citizens of Sandusky, all of us. And, and my concern about the details on this fall from the fact that once you move 173 people from that pier to all of the empty spaces that you recognize, uh, and it's, it's obvious that we just are assuming or kind of roundabout guessing that it's going to be enough, you have to recognize that we will be displacing people who park for businesses that are currently downtown, and they will, and depending on who gets there first, either move further away or not, which means lunchbox customers or whoever it may be, uh, those, those businesses may be affected by how far their customers have to walk. I acknowledge that for events, people will walk miles, of course they do. The question is whether or not, on our day-to-day business, that we as the city have looked out for and planned appropriately for these, for these little details. And since we've never looked at this or even, I should say, have not talked about this in its entirety, of how we're going to provide, just the statement that if we manage it perfectly, it will be wonderful, is something that I'm not quite ready to vote yes on. So let me move to the next question that I had for you. Up at the, uh, north end, it, it's three different occasions, folks on, for the east and west sides have asked for angled parking, and yet it hasn't become that. Is there a, and you haven't mentioned it, that you're going to do it, so let me, I assume you do intend to leave, uh, 90-degree parking on the edges, just need to know why. I think it's, uh, not very good for, people didn't drive down there to look at the Chesapeake, uh, or the boats on the side, so.
Mr. Pesta.
Sure, absolutely. Um, so the answer for the 90-degree versus the angled parking comes down to math, and the most efficient parking lots in the world have 90-degree parking spaces in it. So if the parking spaces were go to angled, you're going to lose additional parking spaces. So this is a way to maximize the parking that is provided on the proposed plan.
Mr. Chairman.
Poole.
Just let me make a suggestion. When you're dealing with 10 spaces on a 90 versus a 60 or, or whatever you choose to use, you'd lose one space. I would suggest to you that we would be, uh, we wouldn't have killed the plan if you simply moved the grassy area down a little bit and cut 15, 20 feet off the back end of it. And we could have plenty of room, not only for angled parking, if you took 20 feet, you could put another row of parking, which I, I, I'm concerned that we're not going to have enough, but it's, if you don't, just the same, to get that one extra space when you put those 10 at an angle, would not cost very much from, from moving, downsizing the grassy area by 10 feet. Okay, so it can be done, and yeah, I get the math, about 90s are more efficient, but 90-degree spaces that you can't use because they're not pointed out at the water, instead of facing the Chesapeake, doesn't sound to me like it's a bad, that it's a bad trade-off to get an extra 10 feet. Just a, just a thought.
Ms., I'm sorry, Mr. Pesta, do you have something to add?
I did, and just to react to or, or provide a response to that Commissioner Poole, is that the other thing that not, that angled parking does, is it certainly, uh, suggests, if not determines, the travel path, right? So now you've created a one-way situation. And what we've seen, and it happens actually on Shoreline Drive, you can see where the angled parking is, if the angles are pointing to the east and there are people that are driving westbound, they swing wide and they get into that space. And so I think that that also, uh, can create a traffic issue, that can create a safety issue, um, but that, kind of that angled portion, not only that will that, uh, ultimately lose parking spaces, but it also then, uh, forces particular vehicular patterns, uh, that are there. And as far as the, the spaces that are on, uh, the green space, or if we were to cut back the green space, uh, the additional 20 speed, 20 feet, one of the things that we heard, um, and I'm just repeating what we heard at, at many of the community meetings, is we actually had options that had, uh, parking that were there, and we were told that that didn't, uh, demonstrate waterfront parking because you were going to pull into that space and not see it, not see the water. So that was something that we were asked to remove from the plan, uh, as part of that discussion and discourse.
Mr. Poole, did you have another, uh, it seemed like you had one more.
Yes, the, the staging of the Juman. Currently there's sta, I mean, for, it is, it is a, the congestion's not about driving up and down the parking space where we have parked areas, it's 40 cars having to sit on Shoreline Drive to get on the Juman while they wait for them to unload. So when you dealt with them, what was the concept of how that was going to actually work for us?
They were comfortable with that from an operational standpoint, and I, but, go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, please.
No, 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 it's-
No, I was going to say that they were comfortable from an operation standpoint. What they need is that they need spaces that once they go through, or they need space, um, on the north side of their gate, so it's just off of the screen here, so if I could point, um, approximately here.
Sure.
They need space to the north, so as someone, uh, drives through, if they're going to board the ferry with the vehicle, uh, it gets scanned, it goes through the, um, the X-ray scanner that's there, and then they just need a, a space for those cars to sit as they start to board. So they felt absolutely comfortable with the space that was there, uh, they knew that they could make that work, or they feel that they can make that work.
Mr. Chairman, I would point out for us that they should be perfectly comfortable with it, because what happens on the south side on Shoreline Drive has nothing to do with their business. So yes, they're perfectly satisfied with it, but the cars on Shoreline Drive blocking traffic for us have no impact on what they do, and I understand why they do, so that's a concern that I have that makes this plan as it's written, uh, difficult to absorb, because in the long run, we have to deal with all these issues, not to mention the fact that after we spend whatever the cost, between five, seven, 10, whatever it is, we ultimately end up with the same utilization we have and just a green space to repeat what we're already doing essentially, and granted what you've drawn is better, but we're already have a place to play guitars and, and music on the other side of the Chesapeake. We have grassland along the bay, all along other places, that we don't seem to have any demand for. And I recognize as a, one lady said that, that it cha, it doesn't, the difference between grass and cars isn't a whole lot of difference, other than what you happen to prefer. Uh, if you're going to put 1,500 people on this pier on a regular basis, then I guess then this will be considered successful. If it's going to sit as empty as the grassy areas do elsewhere, then we probably have spent $5 million. This should have been spent cutting trees, fixing sidewalks, and a few other things in the community.
Mr. Webster.
I'll put it there.
I'm sorry, Mr. Webster.
Absolutely, thank you.
Ma'am? Mr. Webster?
Through the commission president to Commissioner Poole, one, the funding sources for this are ineligible for trees or anything else, this is a tax increment financing piece of funding that is restricted to a geographic area for public infrastructure around, so that was, I just want to make sure people don't think that was actually a possibility for these funds, it wasn't. Uh, and then the reality is that there's going to be queuing for the Pele Islander of those 40 cars, which is a quick loading and unloading process regardless. Uh, the next time I see Shoreline Drive congested with traffic will be the first time. Uh, I'd rather have a, a car parked in front of the garage of the Chesapeake Lofts, which is a blank brick wall, than 40 spaces occupying a waterfront pier. So I think that was a really rational choice of the planners to allow for a very quick queuing that'll happen once or twice a day, uh, on a busy day in the weekend. Um, I know that there can be disagreement with that, but I do think it's thoughtful, and this happens quickly, so I, I don't think that that was an irresponsible or something that wasn't planned, I think it was a wise choice.
Thank you, Mr. Webster. Other commissioners, other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Brady.
Regarding the Jackson Street Pier, I'm making the motion that we accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission and direct staff to take all necessary steps to implement the design presented before us today. Specifically, I'm asking staff to bring back to this commission a contract to implement this design for our deliberation and our eventual vote.
Second. And a motion second. Discussion and continued questions to Mr. Pesta.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Torrey.
First, I want to thank City Architecture. Um, the work that you've put into this, as you said, has been exhaustive. Um, the public sitting here as well as viewing, um, I want to thank everyone who has expressed their opinion, their viewpoint, um, this has been a long process, and there are people on both sides of the issue that feel very strongly about it. Um, I support this plan, um, I believe that it, it will be a good thing for Sandusky, and I think someone, I don't remember her name, outside from, lives outside of, or works outside and, and listens to people from outside of Sandusky, um, they're looking at us. I am excited about what has been taking place and what is going on. It's, change is difficult. Um, someone mentioned that change is inevitable, change is inevitable, but we're trying to make the changes that we can help those along to, to participate, to still feel part of the change and feel like that their word is, is, is taken into consideration. No one is going to get everything that they want, but we've tried to listen and we've tried to accommodate various viewpoints, perspectives, and, uh, concerns that people have had. I feel comfortable with the process, uh, we've been very open, um, this process has not been done in a vacuum, um, everyone has had every opportunity to express their concerns, whether they talk to a commissioner, a city person, the public meetings that we've had. Um, I, I know it's difficult for some, um, but again, we are trying to look at ways to honor our past, uh, remember the present, and think about our future. Uh, we are visionary, and, and I, and I don't make no excuses for, for being visionary. And I think that this is a process that we will continue to try to seek and do as we make changes. So I, I fully support this, and I want to thank, again, the, the, the community, um, for this within Sandusky, without of Sandusky, um, the city staff who has, again, um, has have been troopers, um, have, have presented themselves, made themselves available, and again, City Architecture. So thank you very much.
Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Walker.
A couple of questions to start off. With the, um, let's look at ADA, uh, the number- The number of spaces that you allotted for ADA?
As far as required by law?
No, I mean, how many spaces do you have up there that you have allotted for?
It's to be determined. So we can, we can expand. What I can tell you is that a parking lot of this size by law requires four spaces.
Okay.
What I would suggest is that that number at least get doubled, tripled, maybe even quadrupled onto this site based on the comments that we've heard.
You may, at this point, suggest 12 spaces for the...
It can be expandable. It can be expandable depending on what we hear.
What do you foresee? I mean, you're, and forgive me, I'm putting you on the spot because you're the one that's actually putting this plan together.
I would say, I would allocate the plan, I would distribute them through, I would say 12 to 16 parking spaces.
And where would they go?
I would do two to four on what I would consider the southern parking area, so adjacent. I would do another two to four adjacent to the ticket house or to the ticket booth where the good time is, and then I would do the balance on the northern side.
Okay, how do we know that that's going to be adequate for what we need? We have 98 spaces and you took 16, right?
Sure.
Roughly. And so we spaced those out, I'm not sure how you determine where you spaced them out at, but is that adequate? Is that adequate for the parking for the Jet Express to squeeze in? Because we're going to have to have handicap in front where the boats go, and then up front, where somebody that wants to do what you call scenic overlook, we'd have to have adequate spacing up there for ADA. And then at the market itself, you'd have to have some ADA. So it seems like we might need more than just 16, we're probably going to need a lot more of that when we talk about ADA accessibility.
Sure.
And the reason I ask that is because, one, I'm a liaison to the ADA committee, and they have definitely brought this issue up more than once, more than twice, and some of them are on the Friends of Jackson Street, and of course, the webs came today, and as you can see, they have an ADA requirement as well. And when I look at the center portion, what you call, was it the grassy knoll, the thing there?
Grassy knoll.
You have, you have said that that's an event space, but what I see is if there's 1,000 people that can fit up there, there's 1,000 people that can't access that with ADA requirements. So we've had that same problem when we talked about Lions Park. You know, traversing that distance, and would you say that's an acre worth of grass?
Here?
Here.
It's less than half, it's about half.
Okay, so we got a half acre. Do you know what that's like on a wheelchair or crutches trying to traverse that distance? In their terms, you're talking about a mile or two miles of walking, or if you can actually do that, if it's raining, if it's sloped. Do you understand what I mean by that?
I absolutely do.
So how is it that somebody can enjoy the grassy knoll, you know, with a wheelchair or crutches or what have you? And if it's raining, what happens?
Okay.
And the reason I ask that is because of the usability of it. Do you know what I mean?
Absolutely.
So I'll let you answer that question before I ask the others.
Sure, there are a few questions I'd like to address. I think I'm going to go back to the accessible parking spaces that you asked, like how would we know what was adequate? Because in my mind, and we work, I would like to think that City Architecture is very responsible when it comes to equitable and equitable design. I would not recommend the minimums, that's why I said around that 16. Here's the great thing with parking spaces, it's paint on the ground. So if there are 16 spaces that are striped and it is too many, they can be reduced to 12 or 15 or whatever that number is. If it's not enough, then the adjustment can be certainly made in the other way. So I think that from a parking allocation standpoint, there is some fluidity even after the design is ultimately constructed. We see that happen all of the time in parking lots. From an accessibility to the great lawn space, I would agree that increasing or making sure that that is, again, something that is accessible by all that would go here. So one of the things that I did fail to mention, and I apologize, is that that central green, or that central circular drive where the tour bus is shown, there are removable bollards all along this side. So if someone during an event, there's nothing that says that a vehicle couldn't drive, drop someone off, or get them closer to where that is, and you can see the proximity of the space, there's also seating underneath the trellis, and we could certainly design space that either omitted some of the benches, so if there was someone that was in a wheelchair, they could still drive or park underneath that space or sit underneath that space and have a view of that, of that great lawn. So absolutely, accessibility is part of the design through and through.
But not actually accessible on the grass.
As far as a wheelchair onto the grass? Yeah, you could do that. Why couldn't you?
Have you ever been in a wheelchair and traveled a half acre?
I've been on crutches.
It's different.
I'll leave that, I'll leave that line, but, so let's move on.
50% of the space being cars parked.
You know, as I look at this, I want to make sure that we consider everybody, and I want everybody that is here to listen to the other side so that we're both on even ground. That's what makes us great about what we're doing here today. You know, if you don't agree with the people that want more parking, you should listen to why that bothers them. The same with the people who want the green space, you should listen to why, you know, they think that's an amenity to them. But I will say this, what I have noticed, and I've really taken a lot of time to try and put this together in my head and listen to everybody that's here to try and make up a decision to vote for this, is that when I look at this, I like it, it is a pretty design, a pretty design, but, you know, when I look at some of the things there, people that live in Jackson Street, not Jackson, but the Chesapeake, or in that close proximity, as I've said before, they, you know, people that move downtown in an urban environment where there's concrete and all that, they've already chosen and foregone grass. You know, people move for amenities, you know, proximity to amenities. So I want to walk out my door, boom, there it is, there's a market, there's a bar, there's a shop, there's the lake. So I've already chosen, I don't want grass. I don't want to cut grass. I wouldn't live in the Chesapeake if I wanted to cut grass. You know what I mean? So that bothers me in some aspects, you know, and how does this design keep people here? You know, they're getting on the boat and they're going out to put in base, spending their disposable income. How does that keep people here? And how is it mindful of the people that lived here? You know, what we look at is the faith of people that have lived here for many years, the people that have paid the taxes, the people that are lifelong residents, and they want the faith of us to maintain why they paid the money to have Jackson Street Pier there anyways. And so if we don't listen to them, we're making a mistake. You know, I understand that we want to go on into the next generation. What I'm struggling with is what takes us into the next generation into this plan? You know, what inspires somebody in their 20s and 30s and 40s or what have you to come and spend some type of disposable income? And what makes someone that may be retiring come and say, "I'm going to retire here"? You know, nothing strikes me as particularly, you know, grabbing of it. You know, when we look at the market, what is the market? You said there's tents there, but, I mean, you could put tents anywhere in the city. Do you follow what I mean by that? So I'm really struggling with this decision as to how we, how we look at these things and how we maintain the cost. Recently this year, and I won't go too much longer, recently, we decided that we wanted to have a program where we cleaned our downtown streets so that we can reallocate our resources to other locations. And so with that in mind, how do we take care of downtown and we take care of other places, and we've added on to the burden? So are we like subtracting and adding and putting from what we took here to putting it over there? I mean, again, I struggle with that, too. There's one question I have. I just want to make sure that the people don't feel like we're doing a bait and switch, you know what I mean? We're giving them something, we're not giving them something. I just, I really, really struggle with this decision, hearing from people, because what it is, is one big thing that I see, that people that don't have boats, this is their only access to the water.
Right.
I lived in a big city, and I live in a small city, so I know the difference between going to the water. In Cleveland, we drove to the water for a half hour, and we got there and it was nice and beautiful. But here, we walk to the water and it takes us five, 10, 15 minutes. Nowhere in Sandusky is a, you know, a big distance. So that is their access to the water, so I want to make sure that we are doing that the right way. So today, I guess I, one thing I'd like is to restate the motion that Mr. Brady made so that I get clarity on where we want to go with that, if you don't mind.
The motion that Mr. Brady made was to accept the recommendation of the planning commission and direct staff to take all necessary steps, including providing a contract so that the commission can take the next actions necessary to implement the plan. Mrs. Cresser?
Right on.
Which would include some type of legislation in the future?
In the future, yes.
On this, so we'd have to come back and vote on exactly what it would be.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Brady.
I spent considerable time advocating for a compromise on this plan. I feel like I'm all in. No one's completely satisfied. I'd like you to keep in mind that there's not an activity on that pier after this plan is implemented that you don't have now. You still have parking to view the sunset, you still have parking to sit in your car and eat lunch out of a brown bag if that's what you do, you still can fish, you're still going to have food trucks, and you're still going to have ferryboat service. I had the opportunity this last week to speak at length to, I guess you call them millennials. And he shared with me an interesting analogy when I explained to him how torn our city seems to be over keeping the pier the way it is and making these changes. And he said to me, "Mr. Brady, if we presume for a moment that these changes were what our forefathers already implemented, and we had a pier that had less parking, more green space, do you think all the advocates for parking would show up tonight and advocate that we take all that out and blacktop over that whole area and give you nothing but a blacktop jungle? I think not. I have three grown children, my wife raised, raised them. And she did a wonderful job. And sometimes she claims she had four grown children. But one of the things that she told our three grown children many times was you're going to have decisions, tough decisions that you're going to have to make, and you can do one of two things. You can sit it out or you can dance. And I think this commission is going to make a decision tonight that we're going to dance."
Can they write a song about that?
That's all I got for it.
Ms. Waddington, Ms. Twine, anything further?
I'm good. We're going to take the vote in a second. But I must say, to all of you here, to all of you who have participated in many meetings, I've never been more proud of my city, of our city. The way that we have gone about dealing with what has been sometimes a contentious issue in a very respectful and polite way, in a neighborly way, makes me extremely proud. So thank you for all of that. We, we find ourselves as elected officials in a position in which we would really love to always be, I think all of us would say this, to be in complete agreement with every constituent. It is impossible. That can't be. There will be folks who leave the room tonight who are unhappy with one commissioner or another, I suspect, several, I suppose. And that is something that's simply necessary in order to be able to drive a community forward. You know, as we approach the bicentennial year, it's fascinating to be looking back at the history of the city of Sandusky. We made airplanes and boats and cars, we moved things around, we tore down city halls, we rebuilt them, we moved parks around, we built piers like the Jackson Street Pier. We were really risk-takers and embraced change for 150 years. For a lot of reasons, maybe 40 years ago, something like that, we kind of lost that. We made change by default because if someone had a dissenting view, we didn't move forward. Well, that was a choice, and we paid dearly for that in the form of inertia. And so today, we are again making decisions, but the most dangerous thing to do every day is to get out of bed in the morning and move forward because then something will happen. You'll stumble into an obstacle and you'll stub your toe. There will be people who disagree, but it's necessary in order to be able to have a dialogue and ultimately make decisions. There are, the interesting thing about representing a community is that there are multiple constituencies to keep in mind. Certainly, all the folks in this room are natural constituents. Whether you live here or not, your contributions to our community and to our dialogue tonight are very welcome, no matter how you feel. But we also have to have an eye toward the future. We have to have an eye toward the people who don't yet live here because a community only thrives over the long term by continuing to attract people, families, children, ages, across the entire spectrum to be part of a community. Otherwise, you fail, and we're watching that happen in many small towns across America. And as someone has, I think several people have pointed out, we're incredibly fortunate to have the assets that we do, Sandusky Bay and Lake Erie and the waterfront that has been preserved for all these years. I've been particularly impressed by the younger folks and the, not Mr. Brady, the younger folks and the families who have come forward and said, "This is really what we want." And I've heard them here, I've heard them at the planning commission, I hear them in the street, at restaurants, in the grocery store. Goodness, it takes about an hour and a half to get to the grocery store anymore, but I love it because people have a chance to express what their feelings are. They do say that the future belongs to those who will own it, and I think the final deciding factor for me is how many younger folks really embrace this plan and want to bring their families here. I think we need to be a city that's welcoming for all ages, and I think that this plan does exactly that. So with that, Mrs. Cresser, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
No.
Mr. Poole?
No.
Ms. Lloyd?
Same.
Motion passes. You are all welcome to stay. We have considerable business to attend to yet tonight, but this would be an appropriate time if you wish to clear out.
Sit down.
By the way, Dennis.
Hi.
It's been timed.
Do we get to revote?
Please revote.
Oh, yeah, I was going to say, they're ready to kill. At least a little bit more than a half. 43,560 square feet is an acre.
You don't like being in the front row? You might get called on?
I can argue with an ass.
You too, I appreciate you.
That's okay.
He's ruthless.
We're good.
He's ruthless.
I feel comfortable.
I'm not giving it to you.
No.
I can't tell you my, I can't express my level of disappointment that no one wants to stay for the rest of the morning. Today, we will.
Let's do it.
All right, folks. We're going to continue on with our regular items of business.
Commissioners, we have several communications from staff recommending that we adopt various resolutions or ordinances. Would someone care to make a motion to accept those?
So moved. Second.
And a motion second. Discussion? No objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion will be approved. Mrs. Cresser, would you present the consent agenda, please? Oh, I'm sorry, commissioners, you know, this is a problem, that's why you don't hear the Irish. How to make the motion. The, the, commissioners, you have before us the various items on our consent agenda. Would someone care to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda items A through H, declaring that all ordinance and/or resolutions that are drafted and presented to the city commission under the consent agenda shall take effect in accordance with section reflected in their ordinances and/or resolutions, whether it be accordance with section 13 or section 14 of the city charter.
Second. And a motion second.
Commissioners, we have several communications from staff recommending that we adopt various resolutions or ordinances. Would somebody care to make a motion to accept those?
So moved. Second.
Been a motion, second discussion.
Yeah.
Lot of objection. The motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion will be approved. Mrs. Cresser, would you present the consent agenda, please? Oh, I'm sorry, commissioners.
Somebody's got to...
You know, this is a problem. That's why you don't give the Irish a two-week break after work. Forgot how to make the motion. The commissioners, you have before us the various items on our consent agenda. Would someone care to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Brady?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda items A through H, declaring that all ordinance and/or resolutions that are drafted, presented to the City Commission under the consent agenda shall take an effect in accordance with section reflected in their ordinances and/or resolutions, whether it be accordance with Section 13 or Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Been a motion, second. Before we begin discussion, commissioners, is there anyone wishing to remove any item from the consent agenda? Mrs. Cresser, would you present the consent agenda, please?
Sure, you just did it backwards, but I'd love to.
I know, you know. I did it again.
Item A on the consent agenda is a second reading. It's a payment for the Ohio EPA license to operate Big Island Water Works during calendar year 2018. Item B is also a second reading. It's a payment for the Ohio EPA annual discharge fee for the wastewater treatment plant during calendar year 2017. Item C is a second reading. It's an amendment to legislation pertaining to golf carts in the city. Item D is a land bank item. It's the sale of property located at 1313 Huntington Avenue. Item E is the approval to accept 11 parcels of land through that land bank program. Item F is approval to make grant applications for the 5311 rural transit and 5339 bus and bus facilities programs. Item G is a submerged lands lease for the Big Island Water Works property located at 2425 First Street and 101 Cedar Point Road. And item H is an amendment number five to the general appropriations ordinance passed earlier here by the commission.
Having heard these various items, is there any discussion? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners first on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
And now on the ordinances and resolutions.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Those ordinances and resolutions are adopted. Item number one, please, Mrs. Cresser.
Item number one is an ordinance authorizing and approving a grant in the amount of $15,000 through the substantial development grant program to Chris Andrews LLC, doing business as Ohio Truck Sales, in relation to the property located at 1801 1707 George Street, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Waddington?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Been a motion, second discussion. Ms. Meratori, I see you at the podium. I take it you have a presentation, and thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the commission. I'm here to discuss a recommendation approved at the September 12, 2017 Economic Development Incentive Committee meeting. And the recommendation is to provide a grant of up to $15,000 to Chris Andrews LLC, doing business as Ohio Truck Sales for the project at 1707 and 1801 George Street. This business is solely owned by Chris Andrews, and he is here this evening. So if you have any questions for him, he is here also as well. Ohio Truck Sales purchases, refurbishes, cleans, paints, and resells long-haul semi-trucks to customers from all over the country. They are especially focused on Kenworth and Peterbilt heavy-duty trucks. And I just have a couple pictures to share. These are some of the before pictures of the property on George Street. It was previously vacant. The company is locating its business from its current location on Mylan Road in Perkins Township. And Perkins Township was previously notified of this business relocation. Here are some pictures of the project during construction. The project consists of a large addition to an existing building. That addition is over 13,000 square feet. And also renovation of another building for office space. Again, some additional pictures. And the project also includes other site improvements, including fencing, driveway, and additional concrete work. Just in terms of the project costs, the total project is estimated to be over $1.9 million. That does include the acquisition of the property, which is shown here on the right-hand side under the uses column. Excluding the acquisition, it's about a $1.5 million project. The grant assistance recommended is approximately 1% of total project cost, excluding acquisition, and it leverages private funds over 100 times. The required completion date is June 30, 2018. And I do also want to make everyone aware that Ohio Truck Sales did request and was granted a 10-year, 75% enterprise-owned tax abatement earlier this year. As part of that abatement, the company committed to create 10 new full-time jobs, job opportunities by year-end 2019. So that is all I have. This grant does support a growing business that is expanding, both in terms of sales and employment here in the city of Sandusky.
Thank you, Ms. Meratori. Commissioners, questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Waddington?
Just want to say thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Brady?
I want to say thank you, too, for bringing your business to Sandusky. We really appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Brady?
Mr. Chairman, I suspect these jobs are not entry-level positions. Am I correct? They're salespeople's jobs, or mechanic's jobs? What kind of jobs are they?
The entry level, what's your definition of entry?
I'm talking about minimum wage.
No, okay, they're $18, $18.
Yeah, that's what I want to hear. Great, thank you. Wonderful. Welcome. Thank you.
Additional questions or comments? Chris Harris?
To you, Commissioner, President. I just wanted to let everybody know as well, the commission know that Chris has been working with engineering in the law department with his own dollars. We're working on some sort of easement or encroachment with some of the right-of-way there. There is an abandoned George Street road that the city doesn't use, but Chris wants to beautify the west side and add some landscaping and some grass to the area to make it look... It'd be right where that new berm comes around, right in the gas station where we did the overpass. He just wants to make it look more aesthetic to passageways. So we will be coming back. It won't require any expenditures. It's just approving in agreement with the city and Chris, so that he could move forward with landscaping.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Thank you, Mr. Anders. Additional questions or comments? I would note, for the public's benefit, that when we do have, like, we talked about the tax payment, there is a Tax Center Review Council that meets periodically to make sure that... There's no question that Mr. Anders is going to comply with that. But they meet periodically to make sure that those commitments have been satisfied. And that is something that we need to probably repeat every cell office, so people know that there is due diligence being done in connection with that. Unless there are additional questions or comments, Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners first on the motion?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance, please.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number two, please.
Item number two is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a lease agreement with the Ottawa County Transportation Agency for the purpose of leasing two light transit vehicles for the Sandusky Transit System and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Twine?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
It's been a motion, and second discussion. This is a great short-term solution, and I really appreciate the cooperation of the Ottawa County Transportation Agency in order to be able to provide the busing for us when we needed it. Was there something that you wanted to add, Ms. Waddington? I'm looking at the body language.
No, there's nothing more to add. I just noticed that city manager, whoopsir, was pointing to our new employee, and I think he was hoping to be able to introduce him. So this is Mr. Tim Bergman in the back.
I didn't know, Mr. Bergman, hello. Why don't you step to the microphone, so the folks at home can see you and meet you?
Sorry. They were actually pushing.
Mr. President, members of the commission, thanks for the moment to introduce myself. It's been a busy meeting, but I'm happy to be here, excited to learn about a Sandusky Transit System. And we've been making a lot of big changes, a few more on the horizon. And we're always looking to improve. The two vehicles are going to be a great help. The fleet is rather aging. And while we're waiting for the six additional vehicles, these will really allow us to provide the exemplary service that we can strive for every day. Very excited.
Well, thank you. I know you're rolling out some, finally, rolling out some changes that we've anticipated for some time. And there'll be more publicity about that. I know you're meeting with the register at some point in the near future to make sure that word gets out. And I want you to understand how terribly important transit is to this community and how supportive this commission has been to make sure that we have those transit options for our residents and for those in the larger community. So thank you, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Additional questions or comments, commissioners? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number three, please.
Item three is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract for transportation services between the city of Sandusky and the Board of Erie County Commissioners for the Department of Job and Family Services, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Lloyd?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Been a motion, and second discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number four, please.
Item four is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Master Renovations Incorporated of Orville, Ohio, for the CDVG fiscal year 2017 residential demolition project number one, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Lloyd?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Been a motion, and second discussion. I'm glad to see us continuing with four more demolitions. And I just want to keep it up, Ms. Lasko. If there aren't additional questions or comments, Mrs. Cresser, would you please poll the commissioners? Sorry, not four, it was seven.
Nine, correctly.
Nine?
Yes.
Nine altogether. I was calling a number of bids, my mistake. All the better. But that, will that take us off for 100 for years?
To you, Mr. President, members of the commission. This will probably put us close to 100 in terms of... I think we're just short in terms of ones that are actually been demolished. In terms of ones that are out to bid or under contract, either through the city or through the Erie County Land Reutilization Corporation, we're inching closely to 100, which I think we've always had that three- to four-year goal to tackle the 200 that were identified by the Western Reserve Land Conservancy study. And I think we're very well on track. And I just want to let the public know that it seems that we're probably bringing a few less demolition contracts to City Commission, which is true. I think that's really a testament, though, to the slightly over-million-dollar grant that was received by the Erie County Land Reutilization Corporation through the Ohio Housing Finance Agency. So as much as there are fewer demolitions coming to this commission, the county land bank is demolishing about another 20 to 25 properties a year or two that don't come before this commission. So we're still on track to do anywhere between 35 and 50 a year.
Thank you, Ms. Lasko. Additional questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number five, please.
Item five is a resolution declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with a proposed West Market Street sewer replacement project, approving the specifications and engineer's estimate of costs thereof, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Waddington?
I move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension of rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Been a motion, and second discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Brady?
I would ask Mr. Klein to... Because I know he has this answer readily available to give us the footage and the location of this work that we're doing.
Mr. Klein?
To you, Mr. President.
I would ask Mr. Klein to -- because I know he has this answer readily available to give us the footage and the location of this work that we're doing.
Mr. Klein.
Through you, Mr. President. This project is a simple replacement of a sewer. The sewer is between seven and 10 feet deep, 290 linear feet, and it's clay that we're going to be switching out to PVC. Location is on Market Street between Shelby and Pearl.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Additional questions or comments, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
That resolution is adopted. Item number six, please.
Item number six is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Hank's Plumbing and Heating Company, Incorporated of Toledo, Ohio, for the Cedar Point Number 14 ejector station improvement project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion at second, discussion.
Mr. Klein, you might walk us through this. This is another expensive engineering project, but I take it this is one of these things, as you told us before, you have planned out and it's just necessary to maintain the functionality of the system.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. This project is replacement of an obsolete piece of equipment. Basically, the lift station is an old ejector-style lift station, and they don't make those and they don't make the parts for the one that we have in the ground right now. This station is on Lane D, so it services several residents on the Chaussee. Chaussee is relatively unique where it's a lift station pumping from one to the other to the next to the next, so it's critical to have this one in place or it would affect a large run of residents out there in many of the side streets. So, because we're going to be expanding the size of this lift station, we're also going to have to relocate a water line as well. So, one of the key things that we wanted to do was make sure that we did this project in the winter so that all that traffic that would be affected going towards Cedar Point, whether it's the workers driving that way or the residents in the area, they don't have to drive down Cleveland Street and up Cedar Point Drive. So, we're trying to do this at the best time of year that it would be most convenient for the residents in the area and even the residents along Cleveland Street and the commuters along that route as well. The project is expected to be done or required to be done by contract in May, so we anticipate meeting that unless we find some major unforeseen circumstances.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Additional questions or comments, Commissioners? Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number seven, please.
Item seven is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager and/or finance director to expend funds for the emergency purchase and installation of traffic signals and poles for the Warren Street and Scott Street intersection in the amount of $20,515 and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion at second, discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
I would ask Mr. Stuckey -- I'm sorry, I don't think Mr. Stuckey is here any longer, but I would -- I know he had questions regarding this intersection. And I would ask, Mr. Klein, do you have the list of items that your department instituted and put into place in the last week? I appreciate if you'd list those off and at least get them in the record, Mr. Stuckey will maybe view them or read them.
Through you, Mr. President. First and foremost, I would like to thank the Police Department, the County Engineers' Office, and ODOT for helping us. We've reached out to them, we've asked for them to loan us equipment, we could borrow some signage, things like that. So, the list that I'm going to be reading includes efforts from them, and the police have been instrumental in making sure that we get that intersection back to a safe standard. The accident occurred late August. The accident took out both drain poles at that intersection, meaning that all the signals were down as well. So, at that time, we started looking into purchasing new equipment to install immediately. Unfortunately, that equipment takes a week or so to get the prices in, and then it takes 30 to 45 days to actually get the equipment after you place that order. We placed the order a couple weeks ago, so we're ahead of the curve. That's just for the equipment, and that cost ran about just around $2,500. We also have to hire a contractor to do the installation of the new poles and installation of the signals and everything else. So, once we get this equipment in and we're pushing the vendor, the manufacturer, to get that quicker than the 30 to 45 days, but we're anticipating it being completed at the end of -- by the end of October. What we've done in the meantime is we have installed stop signs. Initially, we installed stop signs, making it a two-way stop, eastbound, westbound on Scott Street. Since that time, we have installed -- we made it a four-way stop. We installed two stop signs going northbound and southbound on Warren as well. Last week, we also installed additional stop signs, meaning that we have dual stop signs, stop signs on both sides of the roads as Mr. Stuckey requested. Those are out there. We do have advanced warning signs as well saying that the signal changed. We also have additional advanced warning signs saying that drivers have to stop ahead. So, there are at least three signs on both sides of the road in all directions right now, and there are also flags on top of some of those signs. We've purchased additional stop signs that used to -- we used to use 30-inch at most locations. Our temporary signs were 30-inch. We've increased the size of those stop signs as well. We've trimmed up trees to make it more visible, and we have relocated, temporarily relocated one of the bus stops. I believe it was on southbound Warren that we relocated that bus stop because the signs were in conflict and you wouldn't have been able to have seen everything that was going on. So, you know, there's -- we've done pretty much everything we can. We've even asked the County Engineers' Office to drive that intersection, and they've done that and made recommendations, and we've implemented a recommendation we've received from the County Engineers' Office, from ODOT, and it's been great working with the County Engineers and them reaching out and saying, "Yeah, we'll take a look just to see if there's something you may have missed."
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Are there questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Poole.
Just question, this is going to be a new, modern stoplight system that doesn't have as much maintenance issues as the ones we have now, or no?
Mr. Klein.
Through you, Mr. President. It's going to be almost identical to the previous system, which would be on the wooden poles. The steel poles are about three or four times what the wooden poles are, so that cost of $20,000 would be much more. That's what we put in at the parish in Columbus intersection a year and a half, two years ago, and that project came in, I believe it was $60,000 to $70,000 just for that intersection.
Mr. Chairman, may I suggest that visionary thinking would be thinking in terms of buying the most updated equipment for our city? The pole and the pole and wire setups we have now, as the wind takes them down, we have all kinds of issues. We have maintenance issues with those, that kind of a system, and I think we probably would have been better off, since we do have lots of money, to upgrade. I'm not sure why that particular intersection deserves any less forward thinking than any other street, parish street, so just my thoughts, and I'm probably not going to vote for this because I don't think it's a good expenditure. The rest of the money we'll spend in maintenance costs and electrician to fix it every time the wind blows hard.
Well, Mr. Klein, it was an accident that caused the come down, if I recall what you said earlier, but perhaps you could talk a little bit about the standards that I use for when you go to the wooden poles and when you -- when it's appropriate to go to the steel poles? Or answer any other way you see fit.
Well, in an ideal situation, we would use the steel poles at every intersection. This intersection, being that it's so high-traveled, and we've already had, I believe, three accidents at that intersection since the end of August. If you recall how long it took last time to do the design and the construction, with that $50,000 limit that we had or that -- I'm sorry, that $10,000 limit that we have, it takes us a lot longer to do these projects. We have to hire a consultant, we have to go through the design process, and then we have to go through the bidding and the procurement process as well. So, that whole process would take a lot longer. It's designing the foundations for those poles are completely different than dropping a pole into the ground. I assure you that the signal heads, the controllers, all of the equipment that's going to be out there is going to be today's standard. It's going to be the best equipment that's on the market right now. The only difference is that wooden pole versus the steel pole, the wood have taken -- those things, a lot of times our projects are held up because those things will take between eight and 24 weeks to get in, depending on their load, their workload, because those things have to be specially fabricated per project.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Commissioners, anything else? Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. That completes our regular items of business, and we turn it over to Mr. Whoopsir for the city manager report.
Good evening, Commissioners, audience, staff. Thanks for those who stuck around. Before I dive into the rest of the manager report, I just want to give a big shout-out to Stuart Hamilton and Donna Moody from our Technology Department. They went above and beyond to help us, along with Kelly Cresser, our clerk, to welcome the over -- the over-capacity crowds, I guess is the best way to put it, but we really thank you for that work. I know it doesn't happen often, and they did a really good job on short notice, so we're thankful for that. Starting with the donations, I'd ask for a motion to accept a donation of $11.51 for the K-9 Fund received from Bryson Whoopsir.
So moved.
Second.
Then a motion at second, discussion. Let objection be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved, my thanks.
Thank you. Moving on to the Police Department. Coffee with the Cop will be held on Wednesday, October 4th, from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. at Paradis Restaurant at 1019 West Perkins Avenue. This is part of the National Coffee with the Cop Day. Please join the Police Department for coffee and conversation on any topics that is of interest to you. Moving on to the Fire Department. Sandusky Fire Department, along with Marshall, our friend from Paw Patrol, participated in the Sub-Zero with a Hero at Toff's Ice Cream. We served up ice cream and mingled with the kids and parents. The event was a great success. Also, on September 23rd, which was a Saturday, the Fire Department partnered with area police and fire departments for a first responder event at Mad River Harley-Davidson. Moving on to the Finance Department. The city welcomed analysts from Moody's Investor Services on September 7th, 2017, for a meeting on the various purpose notes renewal. The meeting included a tour of the city to showcase recent success stories and projects. I want to thank Hank and his team, including our Finance Chair, Al Nichols, for really setting up a great presentation for them. Matt and his folks in the Development Department also did a really good job highlighting some of our economic development activities. They were very impressed and said that they work with a lot of small cities throughout the Midwest, and not nearly any of them are in as good of a position as Sandusky as far as its momentum or its reserves. So, we're excited with that. Also, the next scheduled Finance Committee meeting is Friday, October 20th, 2017, 7:45 a.m. Moving on to Public Works. The Department of Public Works plans to release requests for proposals for three different projects, including a new sludge chopper at the wastewater treatment plant, the installation of a floating dock at the Pipe Creek Wilderness Wildlife Area at the end of River Avenue, and structural repairs to the digesters at the wastewater treatment plant. The plan is to complete the floating dock and digester repair projects as the first two designed-pilled projects ever completed by the city. Also, crews for ODOT's Myland Road Bridge project are remobilizing today so they can have it completed by the end of the construction season. And that includes -- I've got some more, sorry. In the community development, the regular planning commission meeting will be held October 25th at 4:30 p.m. in the first-floor conference room. The regular Board of Zoning Appeals meeting will be held on October 19th at 4:30 p.m. in the first-floor conference room, and the new transit routes will be in effect starting Monday, October 2nd. The proposed new routes will be on the city website and brochures, which I've seen, they look great, will be available at City Hall, the Amtrak Station, and in all transit vehicles. Moving on to Public Services. Shoreline Park Shelter upgrades are planned for October of this year. A metal roof would have been ordered and are scheduled to arrive in two weeks. Metal roofing will match the small bench coverings located near the play structure. Also, the drive-through drop-off day has been scheduled for this Saturday, September 30th. For any questions on that event, please call 419-627-5884. Again, the drive-through drop-off day will take place this Saturday, and for questions, please call 419-627-5884. Moving on to Recreation. Request for proposals for operation of the Shelby Street Boat Ramp will be available on October 12th in my office and on the city's website. Proposals must be submitted by November 9th at 3:00 p.m. And the trick-or-treat in the city of Sandusky, there will be a downtown merchant trick-or-treat hosted by downtown merchants on Saturday, October 28th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Again, that's October 28th from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And a citywide trick-or-treat Tuesday, October 31st, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. Again, October 31st from 5:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. on the citywide trick-or-treat. And that concludes my remarks for this evening.
Questions or comments for the city manager? Love to see the Shoreline Park Shelter getting upgrades. I've been looking for that for a long time, and I'm glad we're taking some proactive steps to make sure we protect that fine facility. If there aren't any other questions or comments for the city manager, then I'll turn to old business. Any items of old business, Commissioners? Any items of new business? I have two. I do need to set a -- Mrs. Cresser, do I -- is this by motion or do I just set this?
Motion.
Motion, okay. Commissioners, I would appreciate a motion to set a public hearing on November 13th regarding a zone map amendment for Key Real Estate -- Key Real Estate Limited for three parcels located east of Myland Road and on the south side of Myland Road, the Myland Road overpass. Would someone care to make such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Then a motion at second, discussion? Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the Commissioners on setting the hearing, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
That hearing is set. And one other item, we have the groundbreaking on City Hall this Wednesday at September 27th at the Columbus Avenue site. I'm sure you all know where it is. It's from 5:00 to 7:00, and the public is most welcome and invited to attend. Other items of new business? Then we will turn to public comment. Anyone wishing to address the commission, give us your name, address, and share with us your thoughts, please.
Sharon Johnson, 1139 Fifth Street. I'm not quite -- I need some clarification on the motion that was made on the pier. What I think I heard was that the motion was made to bring the architects on board, so they'll -- you'll have, what, at the next meeting, a contract for them to sign and polish up the drawings? Is that correct?
What we -- the staff was directed to -- what we did is we accepted the recommendation of the planning commission and directed the staff to take all necessary steps in order to further the project. That will involve contracts at some point in time, but it's going to take a little while to pull that together.
So, we're ready to bid out, then?
No, we're a long ways from that. We need construction drawings, and only then can we go out to bid. This is a conceptual plan.
But this was -- this plan's been adopted by this commission, and this is what's going to fly, right?
This is what we directed the staff to proceed with, yes. There may be additional changes that occur as the process unfolds in order to be able to take care of or take advantage of any number of good ideas or cost savings or, you know, so it -- what we did tonight was we approved a conceptual plan.
Do you have to approve it again, then, after they tweak it?
There will be many more votes on this topic.
When will the final vote come, then? You know, I mean --
I would assume sometime. I don't know how long that's going to take. I mean, it's a process of developing a contract for the engineering drawings and the architectural drawings, and then going out to bid and ultimately accepting a bid.
Okay, so there'll be another vote before you take it out to bid? Vote?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tim Schwanger, 362 Sheffield Way. I want all seven Commissioners, including the ones that can't vote and probably shouldn't be deliberating, to understand one thing and one thing only, that the people that are vocally concerned about this latest plan are not against change on the pier. And I wish the folks that were here before that spoke in favor of this project would understand -- they understand it, but they don't want to acknowledge it, I guess, because they're all watching on Facebook, they've all been to the meetings, you know, either here, State Theater, or privately. We are not against change on the pier. There were basically three stakeholder groups involved in this pier plan. One was the boat lines, number two was the public interest groups, which is the Friends of the Jackson Street Pier and the 58 Dockers, and then representative from the ADA Board, that was number two, and number three were the event planners, okay? And I'm going to read to you minutes from the Events Planners meeting with Alex Pesta and the rest of the consultants. The Events Planners basically came back that they want an events complex on the pier seating between 600 and 1,500 people, and that's what you're looking at in this latest rendition. And what I'm here to tell you as a representative of Friends of the Jackson Street Pier, Mr. Mayor, you've heard it, I've talked to you privately, how many events complexes do we need along the waterfront? You've got a events complex at the Paper District Marina that's used three or four times a year for movies, Touch a Truck, and we just had the Dragons and Bacon Fest, okay? To be clear, that is a poor design, I think you acknowledge that, it's underutilized, and to be further clearer, we can use some of the same TIFF money that we're using today for the Jackson Street Pier, make upgrades to the Paper District Amphitheater because that's within the TIFF boundary, okay? You've also contracted with the Trust for Public Lands to do a possible and probable events complex on the site of the former Surf's Up Sandusky Bay Pavilion site. So, we have the Mylander Shade Plaza, you've got Washington Park, okay? So, as this issue progresses, which you acknowledged tonight, there's many more votes coming, there's more tweaking. What I'm here to tell you is we don't need an events complex on the pier. There's an effort from the Downtown Sandusky, Inc., the Erie Shores and Islands through tourism to move a lot of the events from the downtown streets because allegedly we're preventing customers to go into some of these businesses, so there's an effort to move them to Shoreline Drive or out into the Jackson Street Pier. And in our private meeting with Mr. Whoopsir out at Mirawood Village, he could not guarantee us that the Jackson Street Pier would not be closed during events on the Jackson Street Pier, and that is the underlying issue. So, please, as you move forward, consider our comments. I think I'm here speaking on behalf of the Friends of the Jackson Street Pier. That's our main concern right now. Are we disgusted with the entire plan? Absolutely not. move them to Shoreline Drive or out into, onto the Jackson Street Pier. And in our private meeting with Mr. Whoopsir out at Mirawood Village, he could not guarantee us that the Jackson Street Pier would not be closed during events on the Jackson Street Pier, and that is the underlying issue. So please, as you move forward, consider our comments. I get, I think I'm here speaking on behalf of the Friends of the Jackson Street Pier. That's our main concern right now. Are we disgusted with the entire plan? Absolutely not. I mean, there's some very good aspects of that plan, but we need another events complex. Thank you.
Thank you, Schwanger. And I want to acknowledge the fact that you have been open to change on the pier. You've had a lot of constructive engagement, and I appreciate that, and I expect that you will continue that, so thank you. We may not always agree, but it's good to have the dialogue.
I agree.
Catherine Carter, 5309 Columbus Avenue. I wrote this down so I'd get it right. After Wednesday, Wednesday night's meeting, there were a lot of little groups of people talking out in the parking lot for a while. It was explained why you can't do a public poll, raise your hand, that kind of stuff at a public meeting. I appreciate that being told to me. I didn't know that. I'm learning a lot from these meetings, so I apologize for causing a fuss. And rumors spread fast. By the time the next day rolled around, it was said that the police were called to take me away, so I'm back. Yes, weird, I know.
I don't think that's true.
I get a phone call going, "They took you out of the meeting." No. I, along with Tim, no one on the pier, driving through the pier, running around the pier, has said there shouldn't be changes down there. We all say that. And a lot of people like this design, but again, they're saying a little tweaking. Mr. Whoopsir said, "Well, when we ask questions," he said, "Well, that's in the details, that's in the details." And Sharon stated, "The devil is in the details." And that's, the design changes that I was thinking of would give, I was telling Mr. Gory, that it would give the people that use the pier a little more what they want. You're still gonna have a concert venue, you're still gonna have a legacy, everything's gonna be there. Everything you have there now will be there with a little bit of a change. And I was hoping that you might be a little bit more open to that, but since you've voted to accept this, I just don't see that's gonna happen. So, I don't know what else. Mr. Pesta, this is on his computer. I can take it home and do it tonight on graph paper. He could throw it together tomorrow at work and have it back to you by Thursday. You could put it on the website on Friday, in the newspaper, on Facebook, leave it up there for a week, design number one, design number two, and just get public opinion about it. You would have everything you have there now, your wave, your traffic control, and everything, with just a twist, and that's it. And I think you would have a whole lot more people on your side about this, and there would be less, less divide. This is not comfortable to see these people this upset about it. And I know you don't like to see it, and we, we're not sitting here going, "No, no, no." We do want to see the city move forward. I'm hoping to see, once the new people in town that are putting a lot of money into the buildings downtown, in the next two years, I hope to see a lot of shops downtown, because that's gonna make me come down and shop and park my car where I want to park it and walk around town. And when I just want to come down and get something fast, I can park my car, go into the store, come back out and leave, and someone else will take my parking space. Thank you for your time. I just apologize for the fuss that, on Wednesday night.
No problem. Thank you, Ms. Carter.
Marcy Platt, 1217 Columbus Avenue. I don't think that this commission understands the rift that you've been putting into the community. There's a lot of talk on Facebook, there's a lot of talk on Twitter, it's all around. This has divided the community in many ways, and I know that, that you think that going forward with this plan is what's in the best interest of, of Sandusky. But I just want to know that this has divided this community, and there are very strong feelings. You saw a small portion of it tonight. As a regular citizen, we are afforded the opportunities. This plan really does, if you asked anybody that does not live or work within 400 yards of this, is able-bodied, and also economically can choose a boat or whatever, what you would see is that the majority, as Mr. Lockhart said, of economically disabled, economically underprivileged people would need this. And I'm a little bit concerned that nobody can give a dollar amount in terms of millions of what it's gonna cost, and how many actual parking spots there's going to be. How can Mr. Pesta come up and say there's gonna be 90, when he doesn't know what those parking spots are gonna be, look like? Anyone who has a disabled child and their family knows that in order to have the wheelchair vans that have access on the one side, you almost take up two parking spots. So this diagram is gonna be very interesting. On another note, I noticed that, you know, everybody's really happy when we demolish homes. When we demolish homes, we're displacing families. We're never gonna get that amount of people on that plot of land. I don't think you're approving tiny houses at this point. My, I'm saying to the development committee or whoever it is, "Why not just divide that land and offer it to the residents? You are now, but for money. But why would a resident pay money when you're already coming and cutting the grass? It doesn't make much sense." So we have 26 parks to maintain, which, Mr. Murray, you said yourself, we're doing a terrible job at.
I said we could do better.
Okay, politically correct, we could do better. It's terrible.
I did not say we were doing terrible.
Okay. We could do better on 26-plus parks, plus we're cutting all the grass on land that we don't really want to own. Why not give those neighbors that opportunity to get that for free? Tax dollars would be put on it, and we would no longer spend our taxpayer money paying people to mow it. That's, I think that's the only thing I have. Oh, and Mr. Whoopsir promised us at the Wednesday meeting that if the grassy knoll doesn't work out in a certain number of years, that he would be willing to look at paving that over. So I just wanted you guys to know, he said it at the Wednesday meeting, that if it doesn't work out, he'd be willing to look at paving that over, so.
wasting money.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
It's amazing how much they twist. Anybody say, "It's a beautiful town."
Hello again, Vicki Bird, 2114 Wobert Street. And just again, Brad, City Parks, thanks for the upgrades to Wobert Street Park. Trust me, it's utilized. Lot of kids in our neighborhood. Sometimes if you drive by, take the time, you'll see at least a dozen of them there. That way they don't have to be carted, walked, to another park. Lyons Park can't be used right now, so, and I'm gonna be really happy when that's done. I just did a little poll tonight. Those who came up and spoke in regards to the upgrades to Jackson Street Park, it was 17 versus 13, no, yays and nays, 17 yays, 13 nays. I could make a suggestion, anybody who opposes it, do the work that it takes to have fundraisers and raise thousands of dollars for a lawyer to write up ballot language, to have submitted to the city, and then to walk around this city from the east side to the west side, south side, north side, and get the signatures on petitions that you need in order to place something on a ballot, because it's not free, it costs money. And if you really want to do that, that's what it takes. I know I've done it. It has divided this city. I think it's pretty sad, actually. The attacks on the people that have come into this town, yeah, with money. They're not putting money in my pocket, anybody's pocket, to stand up here and talk, but they are coming in. I've said it before, we can tear down all these old buildings. We can tear them all down. We can tear down the first block of Columbus Ave. We are tearing down abandoned houses. I would like to know what's going on with American Crane Company, because that's one of my main concerns. Flight. What do you want to do? Want to have some vision, move forward, build, rebuild? Abandoned homes, homes that are condemned, need to come down. If you want to give the property away or allow neighbors to take it over, that's great. I have houses in my own neighborhood, too, that, two are being worked on, they had not been lived in for a long time. There was another one that was abandoned, totally inside stripped out. I understand Habitat for Humanity is taking it back over again, and there will be a family moving in.
Ms. Bird, I'm sorry, I just, for the folks at home, we have a three-hour time slot for...
Okay, I'm done.
You can keep speaking. I didn't know, I just wanted to let the folks at home know that it's gonna, the tape is gonna end here in just a second, so. I didn't mean to cut you off, ma'am.
Three-hour time slot.
Well, that's, that's what they give us. Anyone else wishing to address the commission? Well, then, quick make a motion before we run out of our three-hour time.
I'd like to make a motion while you adjourn.
Stand adjourned.